I now call the August ninth meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Welcome to those in attendance and everyone listening online, all board members. No, forgive me, Jim McNeese is not in the building yet. He should be here shortly. Otherwise, Ann Ma is in the building, just not in her seat. So we have everyone in attendance today. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just the consent agenda items C, M, and O did vote separately. C, M, and O.
C, M, and O.
Yes.
Any other changes to the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Dina and Kathy, all in favor? That's eight, and we're missing two. And there's Ann. Did you happen to see Mr. McNeese? You can count Ann on that one, on the approval of the agenda. And then, Michelle, do you want to do C, M, and O separately, or vote as a block? Okay, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay.
To vote as a block.
Can I have a second? Dina? All in favor of C, M, and O. Oh, I'm sorry. Randy?
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle, do you have questions on C, M, and O? Okay.
No.
Am I messing this up? Apologies.
You voted already, so you're good.
Okay.
You approved the agenda. Eight, zero.
Thank you. Forgive me. Need some more coffee. Nine, zero. We got Ann.
She wasn't in the room to vote.
First up, we're going to welcome Craig Neinswander and Dale Brungart for USD budget timeline information. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. So budget timelines. The budget process, as I'm sure you're well aware, actually goes on all year long for school districts. But right now, in particular, it's, it's pretty busy because there are some timelines associated with adopting a budget. And two or three years ago, they changed rather significantly due to a term called the revenue neutral rate. The idea behind the revenue neutral rate is how much tax money is actually being raised. And this applies to all local taxing entities. It's not just school districts. So county commissions, city councils, anybody that levies a tax works with the revenue neutral rate. The idea is that most individuals, when they talk about their property tax and the bill they got to pay, they talk about their mill rate. How many mills am I being assessed? And that's true for the governmental entities. When they look at their budget, they tend to look at how many mills did we put in place last year? How many are we going to have this year? Is it going up or down? But you're probably well aware, that's only half the story. The assessed valuation makes a difference. To determine the number, the amount of taxes that are being levied, you multiply the mill rate by the assessed valuation. So if the assessed valuation increases, which is what's happening across most of Kansas right now, the same number of bills or the same mill rate actually raises more tax dollars. So the law around the revenue neutral rate tells taxing entities, you can't do that unless you notify each individual taxpayer of how much their taxes are increasing. So you can raise taxes, but you have to notify everybody first. That's the idea behind the revenue neutral rate. And the revenue neutral rate itself is how many mills can we levy so that we raise the same tax dollars this year that we raised last year? So if I'm in a school district and last year my LOB was seventeen mills, and assessed valuation went up, my revenue neutral rate's going to be smaller. It may be sixteen point five mills that will raise the same dollars. So if my budget is such that I need to exceed that, I've got to inform everybody. And there's a process in statute that determines how that happens. So by June fifteenth, the county clerk notifies the district what their revenue neutral rate is. What are the number of mills we can levy that would just raise the same taxes? And again, the same thing's happening with city councils, county commissions, cemetery districts, anybody that levies taxes locally. So by June fifteenth, the county clerk tells the districts that. And it has to come from the county because the school district doesn't know the valuation. But the county does. They have an estimate for it. They can tell them how many mills they need to raise. Well, if you're in a school district, your budget for the current year doesn't close until June thirtieth. So it's a little difficult to plan next year's budget when you haven't closed this year's budget and you don't know what your cash balances are going to be. Those make a difference on how many taxes you need to levy the following year. So June thirtieth, the current year closes, and it typically takes a few days after that to work your way through everything and make sure everything's been paid and accounted for appropriately. And by July twentieth, the district has to know enough about next year's budget to tell the county, here's what our mill rate will be. So they send that information to the county clerk, and that becomes the school district's ceiling. If I tell them my mill rate for LOB, capital outlay, and bond and interest combined is going to be thirty-nine mills, that's all the higher I can go. Even though we haven't adopted the budget, that's my ceiling. So that number is given to the county clerk. The county clerk is then required by law to be the individual that informs all of the individual taxpayers. Here's what's happening to your tax payments next year. And that's, again, includes school districts, city councils, county commissions. Everybody goes onto one form, and it literally means individually. They don't send out a form letter about taxes are going up this much. How much are they going up on your household individually? Is it five dollars, twelve dollars, twenty-seven dollars? You will know individually if that's the budget they adopt. This is how much your taxes will, will increase. This year, this is the third year we've had revenue neutral rate. This is the first year that the taxing entities, including school districts, get to help pay for the costs of the county clerk doing that information. Mailing all that information out. They are allowed to email it if they have email addresses to individual taxpayers. But preparing that information, mailing it out, you can imagine is a pretty good task. The first two years, the state, actually, it was just the first year, the state covered the cost. This year, the taxing entities get to help pay for that. Any questions about that little process? Identifying and notifying?
I might just add, as you think about questions you may have, this is really difficult on your business managers in large districts, superintendents in smaller districts. As Craig said, you're closing out one budget year, and then you're developing the transfers in that budget. And that happens really toward the very last week. I mean, even if you're well prepared, and I've been through this many times, you know, okay, we know what the budget, but you're, you're, you're getting to the finite details of that budget at the end of the year. And then that exact amount, where do we transfer? And your board's going to generally meet and talk about where do we want to transfer any amount of money left over? Or how are we going to handle that? You then have to turn around and do this very, very quickly. It was, and if you miss, Craig, I'm sure I'll go through this. If you miss those dates, there's serious consequences to what can happen in the budget. And then, and there's also, I'm sure Craig will go over this too. As, as we look at budgets, once this gets set, you don't get to, you don't get to do much with your budget after that time. So this is relatively new, as Craig mentioned, but you'll hear about this. And you'll get this, most of you will get in the mail like I get. And it'll, you won't be able to make sense out of it at first. You'll go, what is this? Because it's listing your cemetery districts, maybe it's listing your school district. It's, it's listing a library district and what may happen to those mill rates. So I just, I'm sure you've, you've talked about this and heard about this. But, but again, I, I've gotten some emails from patrons. Well, why doesn't the school district know more about this? Well, it's happening all within a thirty day period, less than a thirty day period.
So just to elaborate on Randy's point about closing out the budget and how that happens literally up to the last minute, and then some days, some years it'll spill over a little. Most local school boards will have a meeting sometime late in June and approve the remaining expenditures and transfers that are going to close out that budget. And then they'll make a motion allowing the superintendent and/or a business manager to make any other transfers or expenditures that are necessary to close out the budget. Because even if you meet on June twenty-ninth, somebody's going to walk in June thirtieth with, didn't I tell you about this invoice? Or something you ordered, you'll get notified, that's not going to, that's no longer available. So no, you're not going to spend that money that you have encumbered. And that sometimes happens in July. So it is a very late, at the end of the year process. It's that way for any business, true, I'm sure. And then you're rolling right into, okay, now that I've done that, and I know how much money I have left in my local option budget, how's that affect my tax rate? And then there's some other factors about, well, state aid rates vary from year to year. And if my state aid rate's lower or higher, that affects my tax rate as well. All of those need to be taken into account in an estimate made of your mill rates prior to July twentieth. So you can notify the county clerk. And as I said, that number then is your ceiling. You're going to live with that. When the, when the board meets, which we'll discuss here in just a little bit. In, so in addition to notifying the county clerk, the school district is required to publish their notice to have a hearing on exceeding the revenue neutral rate. They publish that in the paper and they post it on their website. Both are required. That has to be done at least ten days prior to the revenue neutral rate hearing. When the county, or I'm sorry, when the school district informed the county clerk, they also told the county clerk what that date and time would be. So the county clerk includes that on the notification they send out. This creates a little bit of a problem sometimes. Every year, we will have a handful of districts that publish it in their newspaper. And the newspaper gets busy, they forget they don't get it in on time. Or it gets published and it's blurry, you can't read it. So your people weren't really informed. So now you've got to publish it again. Well, most communities, how often does the local paper come out anymore? Once a week. So you've got to wait a week. Now you've got that ten day timeline again. So you probably have to change the date of your hearing. But the county clerk already told them it was going to be on August twenty-seventh, and now you're going to move it to September fourth. Statute doesn't tell us which date takes precedence. So we had a few districts last year had to have two hearings so that they could satisfy both of those in case, as Randy mentioned, somebody complains. The statute allows one taxpayer to file a complaint with the Board of Tax Appeals over the revenue neutral rate. This is not a five percent protest petition. One individual can file that complaint. And it may be they didn't meet the timeline. It may be next section down during the hearing. And this is different for governmental entities, including yourself. Normally, during a hearing, the board does not take action. The purpose is to hear, what do people have in mind? And then you'll consider that and take action later. The way this statute's written, during the hearing, the board will take action to exceed or not the revenue neutral rate. And they specifically need to say, we will exceed the revenue neutral rate. And it has to be a roll call vote that is recorded and reported. All that's written out in statute. So it's a, I refer to it as dotting i's and crossing t's. That's not really budgeting, but that's something that has to be done within statute to meet those requirements. Or somebody can complain, go to the Board of Tax Appeals. And as a district, if the Board of Tax Appeals finds that, no, your motion didn't use the word exceed, you're dropped back to the revenue neutral rate and your budget's cut. And that might happen in December. In fact, that did happen last December. Because they didn't use the word exceed, even though everybody in the room knew what they were intending to do. So it, it's, it's kind of, I'll use a term, it's nitpicky. But you've got to follow it exactly as it's written. And the reason the hearing is held between August twentieth and September twentieth is you have to wait until August twentieth so that you're giving the county clerk time to notify everybody of what the revenue neutral rate is and when the hearing is going to be. That also has to be out prior, ten days prior to the hearing. Any questions about that part of it? So that's all just about setting your, your mill rates, your tax levy for the budget. Actually, adopting the budget by the school board is also taking place at about the same time, the full budget. The deadline to adopt the budget, you have two different dates. If you are not having a hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate, you're under the former law. You have to have your budget done by August twenty-fifth, which is the way it had been, I'll say, forever. With the revenue neutral rate, because you had to wait until at least August twentieth to have your hearing, they extended the deadline. So if you're exceeding the revenue neutral rate, you have your budget hearing prior to September twentieth. And again, you publish that in the paper, you wait at least ten days before you have the hearing. This one is not required to go on the website, it is required to be in the paper. And that's code ninety-nine, you may have seen it in your local paper. And I'm sure it took time to read three columns worth of little bitty numbers that are about this long and, and everything they mean to you. During the budget hearing, the board has to reference the building needs assessment and the fact that they reviewed that and considered it when adopting the budget. And we'll talk a little more about that in just a minute and what that process entails. That has to be included in the minutes of the meeting. And an entirely separate statute, when they adopt the LOB, they're, they're supposed to do that by resolution. And then they certify their mill rates finally to the county clerk. So when the board has their budget hearing and then they adopt the budget, at that point in time, that's when they're actually saying, this is what our mill rates are going to be. And they can be lower than what they turned into the county, they cannot be higher. And there's a whole nother string of issues about the amount of money you said you're going to spend and you can't exceed that once it's been published, and that's a whole nother discussion. Any questions on that?
Kathy? Again, what is LOB?
I'm sorry, Local Option Budget?
Thank you.
Which is supplemental general fund. You'll hear both terms used interchangeably. Yes. Now, acronyms are us, I understand.
Craig, can you, can you talk a little bit about the implications of a district adopting, not exceeding the revenue neutral rate? And what effect that can have if done two or three years in a row?
Sure. So the, the short way to think about it, probably, if I'm not going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, that means I'm going to raise the same revenue I had a year ago, or less. Which is, you can probably guess, is fine if my expenditures are not going to increase either. Then I've got enough money to fund that. If my expenditures are increasing because you've driven by the gas station or you know what's happening to utilities or health insurance costs or any one of a hundred things, then being revenue neutral means I need to cut my budget somewhere else so that I can pay those bills. If you're not reducing it very much to stay revenue neutral rate, you can do that for a year or two. But eventually, that's going to catch up with you and you're going to have to exceed the revenue neutral rate or you're cutting into programs that need to be, have been identified for the benefit of your students. And we'll talk about that in just a minute. So it kind of, let's, let's go through this. So that's the dotting i's and crossing t's part of getting the budget adopted. That's the legalities that you have to meet on the timelines and publication and so forth. So it's kind of a dance that districts are going through right now. And oh, by the way, school's getting ready to start, so they need to focus on maybe kids and teachers a little bit too as well, rather than just their budget. The planning process for your budget goes on for quite a while. And we put October through May, really, I should have italicized those. It goes on all year long, but it probably gets focused on a little more during that timeframe. Local boards talk about their needs in their buildings, in their programs. What goals did we set? How are we doing? Advancing towards those goals all year long. And they review budget needs and, and budget projections. That's not a new process. School districts have done that forever. Couple of years ago, it was introduced into statute that that process needs to be formalized and you need to have a document that outlines what those needs are in each building. So school districts are now required in statute, and that language you see there is statutory out of seventy-two, eleven sixty-three, to conduct a needs assessment of each attendance center in the district. to conduct a needs assessment of each attendance center in the district. Publish that assessment on the website. So you need to have a document that you can publish on a website. Whereas in the past, it might have been all compiled in one document. It might have been a discussion that led a lot of different directions. Now it needs to be a document, which is not necessarily specified what it has to look like or everything that has to be contained in it. We have an example posted online. Districts can get others. They may have one they've already been using. They can certainly use it. So there are formats available that they can follow in conducting their needs assessments. And the information obtained from that needs assessment has to be used when approving the budget. So that goes back to that motion that has to be made when they adopt the budget. Or they have to include that, yes, we saw the building needs assessment and we did consider that when we adopted our budget. That has to be in the minutes of the meeting. So that's going on throughout the school year as you're planning the following year's budget, the one after the one you just adopted. As I said, most of what's in the needs assessment is kind of up to the school district to determine. What are our goals? What are our needs? What are the items we need to be focused on to meet those goals? But statute does require that the board looks at state assessment results and answers three questions related to the state assessment. What are the barriers that we need to overcome so that all students can achieve? The wording in the statute is proficiency above level two. What are the budget actions we need to take to help overcome those barriers? And finally, how much time will it take for us to get all students there? So that's all statutorily required. That has to be a part of the building needs assessment. In statute, I don't think I have a slide for this, I don't. In a separate statute, or actually later in the same statute, it references students meeting the rose capacities. So that's always typically going to be a part of the building needs assessment as well. The rose capacities that are in statute about how students are performing. And that deals a lot with after school, not just while you're in school. The rose capacities make no mention, I tell districts when we go over it with them, if you look at it close and read through them, you'll never see the word math, English. It's all about what can students do? It's very similar to the goals that you have adopted as a board. Are they prepared for life after school? Is what the rose capacities are. That's also in the statute, so that needs to be a part of what a board's reviewing and preparing their students for. As a board, you adopted a goal recently. I guess the goal wasn't recent, but the outcome is to prepare each student for post-secondary opportunities and success. And one of your outcomes related to that was to align the school district budgeting with the needs for each student as identified by the building needs assessment. So you're in line with statute also on the importance of that building needs assessment. Again, that's not a new process for boards, but putting it in writing in a format that can be posted online and shared with others is in a lot of cases. So that's what was changed a couple of years ago. And we reviewed this goal with school districts when we did the budget workshops just to make them aware of what your stance was on the process. So they do that all year long, planning for next year's budget. Meanwhile, the current budget is still going on and undergoing changes as the year goes on. Because as you know, school district budgets are tied to, how many students do we have? And when they adopt this in August or September, they may not know that yet. They probably don't. Certainly didn't know in July when they set their revenue neutral rates and when they had created most of the budget. So the count date is September 20th. And preliminary general fund estimates. School districts will have a legal maximum general fund and a legal maximum supplemental general fund. Based on their number of students, how much money can you spend at most in those two funds? So once they've had their enrollment count on September 20th, they turn that into us by October 10th. And then by the middle of November, they'll get a preliminary letter from us saying, here's what your legal max is. So now we're into November and it's the first time they know preliminarily, this is what your budget is. Year's half over. Now, obviously, they have a pretty good idea, but that's the first official notification. As the year goes on, the board continues planning next year's budget. You get updated budget projections. You have to make staffing decisions, at least in April, if not before, based on what's happening to our budget next year. Where are we going to be able to allocate those resources in order to meet our goals for the students? And then in early May, typically, the legislature makes the final budget decisions that will affect next year for school districts. And local boards continue reviewing with that information the status of their budget. Throughout the year, our auditors visit school districts. You're going to hear more about that later this morning from Laurel Murdy. And audit the enrollment numbers that they turned in. After that audit's completed and we've made the adjustments necessary to their enrollment and their waitings and everything else, they get an audited legal max letter from us. Now this is what your general fund and supplemental general fund really are. Depending on the timing of their audit, because there's 286 districts, it takes a while to do them all. They may get that December through April, sometimes May, before they get that audited letter. And know, again, now this is what your budget is. And then they get a final general fund budget legal max, even after the audit, June 15th. The reason that one comes later is special education is based on the number of teachers in paras, the number of miles driven for special education, and the cost for the really high-need students. Most of that is not completed and reported until late April or early May. So you can't tell them specifically, this is the amount of state aid you're receiving in special education until we're in June. And those districts that have virtual schools that award credits to adults, they're funded based on how many credits you earned, you don't know how many credits they earned until the school year's over. So that's reported in early June. So it's June 15th, truthfully, before they know exactly what their budget is. The school year's over. And oh, by the way, June 15th, we're getting a report on our revenue neutral rate for next year. And we've just now learned what our budget is for the year we finish. So it's a year-long process. One year runs into the next. And that, once again, kind of highlights why it's a little more frantic for business managers and superintendents now to create the budget than it was a few years ago with the timelines on the revenue neutral rate. July 20th gets here in a real hurry if you're trying to close out the prior year. And again, being an educator, I just have to say, this is the important part. This is the important work that boards and school personnel do. And it involves everybody in a school district. Staff, parents, community members. That goes on all year long. That's when you're identifying what your needs are, what your goals are for your students, where are the gaps? What do we need to do budget-wise to address those? What type of training? What type of staffing? This is a focus on tax rates. And it does consume a fair amount of time this time of year, and it does have some consequences associated with it. It's not focused on goals for students. And with that, having been through all that and seeing all of it, you can tell, yeah, it's easy. Nothing much to it. We spend, here at the agency, we review school districts' budgets before they adopt them. If they want us to, they can bring them in or email them to us and we'll meet with them by Zoom to go through those. We typically allow about an hour for anybody that wants to have that. There are four of us that will review them for them. At the moment, we have either seen or have scheduled 230 of the 286. Typically, will be 240 to 250. So that's, and we tell them, we can't tell you if you're budgeting the right amount of money for your custodians or for the football program. We don't know your district that well. But we can help you make sure you're legal and have your mill rates adjusted as they should be and so forth. So that's something we try to do to help out a little bit with that timeline. Any questions, Madam Chair?
I see none. Board members, any questions? Anne.
Actually, I just had a question on another thing they have to do, if that's okay. Nobody asked a question on the budget.
Let me just say this. So are all of you now ready to go out and give presentations on this? See how complicated this is? Now, take that times 286 local boards that may come on, right, new? And they have to understand this. And then think about all the new superintendents that you have and business managers you have. And you see how it's easy to make a mistake in this. Technically, you know, we're trying to help them get legal and most of them effectively get there. But as Craig said, are they really operating a budget to maximize student success? That takes a while because they're just trying to make sure, I don't want to go to jail, I don't want to mess up the budget, I don't, right? And I have to, we have to explain to the board. Patrons come in, they're confused. This is very complicated and it's condensed over the summer. And so it's really difficult. I just, for Dale and Craig and all the people that helped, thank you and guys for doing that. But just one, I think you've got a sense, right? Hey, this isn't easy to understand. I can kind of understand the generalities, but if you're in a school district, you're expected to understand it in depth. And so I just wanted to point that out with your easy button up there, Craig.
And Randy made a good point. I didn't put that on the timeline. New superintendent comes to a district, they start July 1. And July 20th, I mean, in some cases, if they're brand new, they've never done a budget before, period. And by July 20th, they've got to know their mill rates, at least enough about the budget to know that. It can be a challenge. And even the veterans, and we tell them this all the time, you do, you put the budget document itself together one time a year. And then you go through the rest of the year and, as you should be, you're focused on kids and teachers and your community and all those kinds of issues. And then it comes back up a year later. Well, how much do you remember? And I freely admit, I can tell people right now that the food service fund is Code 24 in the budget. You asked me in February, I don't know if I can tell you that or not. But we see so many now that we can do it. School districts are the same way. So there's, even though they've done it before, there will be a new learning curve every year to go through this process.
And you didn't even get into the weeds of the dozen different funds they have and how much is carried over or not anyway. It's huge. So there was another thing they had to do, and I'm not sure if the date's passed, but the policy they're setting for open borders? Did that already have to be done?
No. The open enrollment for non-resident students to be able to attend a different school district, they have to have their policy adopted. The local board does by January 1, the upcoming January 1.
So they've got this fall to figure out.
Which really means they start in May, looking at how much room do we have within that policy? How many more students could we take in? And by next July, they have to be deciding who gets to come from a non-resident position.
Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess what comes to mind for me is, as we are licensing superintendents and whatever the coursework they're going through to obtain that license, are they getting education in that process about all of this to give them a little more knowledge? I mean, are we asking?
Every licensure program I know of for superintendents will contain a school finance, at least one school finance course. Having said that, there's no substitute for doing your own budget, just like anything else that you learn. But yes, they certainly come in with some knowledge.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Jim McNeese.
I just want to make sure the board understands just how helpful, purposeful. We couldn't do it in the state without you guys. Okay, I mean, there's all these districts out there and every one of them relies at one time or another, or all the time and every time, on your support, assistance, consolation, empathy. You know, the State Department and Dale Dennis started, you know, it's not just the workshops that you put together, but it's the personal relationships you have with the different districts that get them to do this. Not just the new ones, but even the veterans that rely on your assistance to make sure that they're not going to jail, but making sure more importantly that the funds that are due the districts for the education of our students is done correctly and makes, they're done. I don't know if you guys realize just how important the department is to the field in making sure that it all comes together. You know, it's not that they're not doing a good job or they're not smart enough. They are excellent. But this is, as we just saw, very complicated and it changes minutely sometimes, but big to other times. It's, right now, superintendents are busy as busy. What do you do during the summer? So thank you to you and your staff and to all. And also to the superintendents and the board clerks and boards, local boards of education for the time they put in to make sure this is all done appropriately and correctly.
Betty Arnold.
And it's actually, thank you, it's actually not a question, but it does piggyback on the comment that you made. And just a reminder, for board members, you hire people that are expert, that can make all of this sound easy while you're talking. And I leave out the door and go, what did he say? But it is a reminder to appreciate those experts that we have in place that give us the information. And you do an excellent job. And I was telling Danny here when Randy asked the question, are we now prepared to go out and make that presentation? And I said, I am. I'll just say, call Craig.
We're always happy to take the call.
Vice Chair Porter.
I just wanted to follow up on what Jim said. I was a superintendent in another state for 21 years. And whenever I came to Kansas, I had more help from the Department of Education in Kansas in the first two months I was here than I did in the 21 years I was at the other state for their department. So this is a very user-friendly department. I appreciate what they do. And I can tell you, as a newbie in Kansas, even though I'd done budgets for 21 years, as a newbie in Kansas, because it's completely different, that was extremely helpful. And I'm glad that we're continuing that process, trying to prevent problems as opposed to playing gotcha after they fail. Thank you.
I don't see any more questions. Thank you so much for all that you do, both of you and the entire department.
Thank you.
Next up, we have licensing test change recommendations from Shane Carter. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Dr. Watson, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Give me just a second to get set up. Thank you. That was magic. So before we get started, I've got one question, an informal poll for you. How many of you have been contacted by an individual that's had an issue passing an exam and qualifying for a license? Yeah, quite a few. So as far as these recommendations, that's kind of the driver and the start of this work that we've done. And it's, I'm very pleased that we finally worked through this. And it's been about a year plus of work trying to identify, you know, take a look at our policies, our regulations, our statutes, what's happening out in our districts and kind of do a review of everything in general and then make these recommendations to you all for some potential changes. As part of the working group that participated to really dig into the data and our statutes and all that, this is the working group. As you can see, there's representatives of individuals from districts, private, public universities and professional organizations. And they all pitched in and helped in this work. So before I get into the regulations, what I should have, I failed to provide you on this slideshow was about the statutes that require testing as well. There are two of them. There's 722162, which is the Examination for Licensor Duties of the State Board, Confidentiality, Availability of Specifications and Results. And it states, "The State Board of Education shall prescribe an examination designed to ensure that the licensure of a person as a teacher is a reliable indicator that the person has the basic knowledge and qualifications necessary to engage in the profession." And then 722163, which is Same Application Passing Score Determined by State Board Passage Requirement, basically grants you authority to set those cut scores. So every year, we push the Professional Standards Board and around June, we bring those tests that have been regenerated. and around June, we bring those tests, uh, that have been regenerated and allow you the opportunity uh, to set up that test score, or cut score, excuse me. Now, as far as our regulation, uh, there's two exams, or two types of exams that we require. First is the pedagogy, uh, and the exams that we use for that is the Principles of Learning and Teaching. And pedagogy is, uh, do you know how to teach, the science of, of teaching? And then there's the content assessment. The content assessment is based on those program standards that when Catherine comes to you and a program's been reviewed for elementary ed, for biology, whatever the case, there's a set of standards that are associated with that. And, um, this content assessment kind of measures, you know, that individual's knowledge of, of basically those standards in that particular area. Now, as far as, like I said, you know, our group, we met numerous times, uh, to kind of dig into the regulations, the statutes, that test data. And eventually, in January of last year, we finally made final recommend, or the group made final recommendations. Uh, we sent that to the Professional Standards Board as a discussion item back in February. Uh, the goal was to get it to, to the April meeting for them to, uh, make their recommendations and get that to you all. That didn't happen. Uh, based on our work, we had to table it, and then, um, the Professional Standards Board picked that up in June and then made their final recommendations. And that's what I'm bringing you today, what, um, what the Professional Standards Board recommended. Before we get into the recommendations, first, I want to go through some test data with you. So for this particular, uh, data set that we ran, I ran it back at, at the end of April. Uh, there was some other data that we used, um, for our working group, but I wanted to provide some fresh and updated data to you today. So this was ran towards the end of April, and it's basically first-time pass rates of, um, all of our tests taken the last five years for our programs. So, uh, if an individual was enrolled in, um, an elementary program in K-State within the last five years, or they were enrolled in a biology program at Newman University in the last five years, that's, that's who's, uh, was part of this data set that we collected. So of all those tests that were reviewed, which there were 59 of them, 44 tests had a first-attempt five-year pass rate of 90% or above. So to me, that's, you know, that's a pretty high, that's a pretty high pass rate. But that doesn't neglect the fact that we do have individuals that have struggled with these exams, and those are typically the individuals that are reaching out and contacting you. Of those, uh, uh, particular exams, I wanted to point out to you the Principles of Learning and Teaching. There's five different, uh, tests that we offer. Those test scores are extremely high with the one anomaly being the ALL level. Uh, the only thing I'll put out about the ALL level is it is a rather new test. Uh, it's been pushed out in the last two years, and, uh, the number of test takers is, you know, kind of small compared to the rest of our, um, PLTs that have been offered for a while. So I wanted to provide you the breakdown of all those tests that didn't have, uh, a, a first-time attempt pass rate of over 90%. And that is the list you see here. If you see two asterisks next to a particular test, that means that test had more than 100 test takers. So there's very few of those. So every one of these tests that are on here has fewer than 100 test takers. In some cases, we're talking there were 10 people or 20. Uh, so the margin for error on those particular exams, if you don't pass, it greatly impacts what that percentage is.
Shane, how do our, uh, cut scores line up with states around us on these tests?
Yeah, so as far as our test scores, typically what we do is utilize the, uh, recommended, uh, cut score that ETS sets. And when ETS sets a cut score, they ask for states to participate in the program to set that cut score. And the good news is, for the most part, every exam that we've, uh, that we have, uh, whenever ETS reaches out from volunteers, we've had individuals from Kansas sit on those panels to establish that cut score. Uh, our cut scores are higher in some areas than others. Uh, some, some states have looked and lowered some test scores. But, you know, around here, um, most states do use that recommended cut score that ETS provides. Um, so some additional data for you. This was questions that came up in previous meetings, uh, specifically the cost. Uh, so for, you know, the PLT, so that pedagogy exam that we require, each of those costs $170. As you see, for our content exams, there's a range, and that's basically established by the number of hours it takes to complete that exam. The longer the exam, the more it's going to cost. Uh, so it ranges from $103 to our most expensive content exam. Uh, this doesn't include our, um, leadership assessment. This is all for the teaching. It's $209, and that is the Elementary Education Content Knowledge for, uh, for Teaching Test, 7811. And I wanted to take a moment to break into this because it's a very misunderstood test. And for me personally, this is the number one test that I get contacted about with individuals that have struggled and haven't been able to pass that exam. So a few years ago, uh, about, uh, 2018, um, previously, ETS's content exam that we had, it, it's always had a component of reading, math, science, social studies, but it was one test. You would go in and you complete it. If someone didn't pass that, they would have to retake the whole entire test, each of those areas, even though they may have passed reading or science. So based on some feedback, um, ETS changed their test. Instead of having just the whole test, they created the subtests uh, to allow that individual, uh, you can register for 7811, and you're going to take all four of those subtests. But if you don't pass one of those particular areas, they'll accept your passing scores for whichever areas you passed, and then you would just retake that particular area. So individual passes reading, math, and social studies, but not science, they can reregister again, just take the only, just take that science, uh, course or science test for a reduced cost. Then if they pass that, they pass the whole exam and then meet our requirements to qualify for a license. So I'll, I'll kind of take a second and let you digest that in case I didn't explain it well. So, yes, ma'am.
How long have they been doing that?
Uh, so this, uh, this test went in, um, 2019.
The subtest?
Went into effect 2019, this particular test, yes.
So you've been able to take a subtest since, since 2019? Okay, thank you.
So Shane's doing an excellent job. I want to just get your mind wrapped around as you think about what changes you may want to make. Again, that Principles of Learning and Teaching is, do I know the concepts of how to teach? And then here's your elementary content. Yesterday, Mr. Porter asked a question, uh, do they know how to teach reading? You're going to ask the opposite question. Do they know, does the teacher then know how to teach reading? The, the purpose of the content is to say, I know reading or mathematics well enough, uh, that I, that I know the content myself well enough. The other says whether or not I can teach it. So as you wrestle with this today of what to do, uh, know that no test is perfect. We, we understand that. Pass rates are high. But when you get a call and someone says, I'm not able to pass this for four times, whatever the area is, is that okay? I think, I mean, that, that's, that's the honest truth. Because yesterday, we had one board member at least asking, I don't know if that's okay. I mean, not on this, but I, I want to make sure professors know what they're teaching. I think we would ask the same thing. I want to make sure the fourth grade teacher knows what they're teaching. Whether or not this exam measures that well, I think is debatable, but it is a national exam that other states use. So, go ahead Shane, but I just want them to start wrapping their head around that.
By the way, I'm likely to ask that question.
So, so it's already been answered or, okay, darn it, okay. All right, so as far as, oh, sorry, I'll go back.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Getting messed up there. So, so the, if they fail a test, and let's say they failed it four times, um, and they went to a learning center and got a bunch of training, but they still came back and they, and they just can't take the test. But the learning center gave them a check or whatever the word is that they do and said that they're, they do a good job. What do, what do we do in some case like that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think he'll, he'll, Danny, I think he'll lead to that as one of the recommendations. So I, I think if you, if you, we go through it, uh, is that, that is real. If, if a university says, but they know it, write some other things, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I would like to point out, you know, for these exams, there are study materials that are offered. ETS offers free, um, test materials through the Khan Academy for practice tests and, um, uh, different support to assist that individual. And our universities are vested or should be vested in, uh, individuals passing these exams because their accreditation is tied to it, uh, and Title II data that we'll discuss, or I, I think you've heard about before, uh, is directly pulled from these assessments. So, uh, so they should be providing those supports as well.
Thank you.
So, uh, before we get into the recommendations, I'm going to move through these in, uh, first, I'm going to start with the Principles of Learning and Teaching, and then we're going to move into the content, uh, exam, because there's two different recommendations that the board basically, or not the board. Well, yes, the board, uh, Professional Standards Board made. First, for the PLT, um, the recommendation is to no longer require it. And the reason why is they feel it's a duplicated exam because we require all universities, uh, to complete what's called a performance work sample for individuals that are completing programs. And that work sample requires that candidate to demonstrate that they under, they know the competencies of teaching that content area. Uh, and, and then they can deliver the instruction. Uh, the PLT is basically multiple choice, short answer, narrative exam that they're answering questions on about it. So, which is a, a better indicator? Is it a, is it a multiple choice test or is it an individual demonstrating that? So based on the board's review, they feel like the, uh, work sample is just more of an indicator of, uh, of a proficient or potentially proficient educator. And for the content area, so for each of those content areas, they wanted to create a process that, uh, could establish those, establish a process for those candidates that have struggled, uh, to pass that exam at least two times, uh, to possibly qualify for a license. So when we go back to our, our regulations, 91-1-203, we require, uh, for an individual to qualify, they have to pass the content pedagogy exam. If they don't do that, the highest level license they can qualify for, at, well, first, they can qualify for a one-year non-renewable license that would allow them to practice and give them time to take, retake those exams, uh, for one school year. If they fail and, or if they're unable to pass the exam, uh, at that point, then the highest level license that we're authorized to issue, uh, based on regulation is a standard substitute. So we have individuals that have tried to take the exam multiple times, and they're still on that standard substitute because they haven't been able to achieve that passing score. So the, so the board wanted to create some type of process, uh, for individuals to go through to possibly qualify for a license. And that process, it's going to use holistic scoring. So we'll take, uh, the individual's GPA, uh, for that program they completed, award them a certain amount of points, for also taking into account their test scores, their highest test scores, a lot of certain amount of points for that. Complete a, uh, building and district leadership assessment. So this is very important. So this isn't going to be for everybody just willy-nilly who completed a teacher preparation program. If they haven't, uh, worked in a school district in Kansas and they're not actively working, they're not going to be able to complete this assessment, and the assessment is, uh, it's going to be required because that's our way of kind of keeping quality and control in this process. And also, uh, Kansas regulations allow for individuals to add endorsements by testing. We, we don't want that group participating in this because if an individual's trying to add that endorsement by testing, typically they haven't taken any coursework related to that content area. So their first course of action is, if you want that, add that exam, go take some coursework and then come back and then try to take that exam again. Once that's completed, uh, we would run those individuals through our licensure review committee for an interview along with their building and district leadership team. Uh, our licensure review committee, when they, uh, interview individuals coming from out of state or, uh, individuals that may not meet a specific requirement, uh, for a Kansas license, they have, they focus on content standards and asking questions and interviewing individuals about how they deliver that instruction related to those program standards, those content standards. So it's a natural fit for them to review and do an interview. So once that's completed, we have all their points, the LRC will make their recommendation to you. And, um, and whoops, and then after they make their recommendation, you all would determine if that individual would be eligible to qualify for a license. Pending your questions.
Betty.
Actually, it's not a question. I, I, I really love what you're doing because when I've interacted with, um, people in the field, it, it almost seems as though their perception is we're an obstacle instead of trying to encourage, uh, and support a career path. These, this, this recommendation actually, uh, puts us in a light of trying to work with that individual because understanding that there can be, um, a number of problems in the way and just even the anxiety of, um, testing. The, the one thing that I do want a little information on because, um, on the exam that we are leaving. If our role is, uh, set up to, designed to ensure that they're ready, when do we actually take a look at the exam, understanding what our goal is and seeing if it really aligns? Is this really providing the kind of information that is needed or is necessary in order, um, to distinguish that individual as being prepared?
Yeah, so, you know, as far as those tests, at any point, if, you know, the state board had a question about a test, we could do a review of it. But the natural process that most normally happens is every 10 years or so, ETS regenerates an exam. Um, and then they push that out to us to, to review, and then we'll go through and review that exam and then make that recommendation for that cut score to you. But, um, what about it? Oh, well, yeah, same thing for the PLT.
I know, we're doing away with the others. It, it was the, I'm sorry.
So it's the PLT that you're asking?
The content.
Okay.
If the recommendation is to do away, um, with the, the pedagogy, what?
Yeah, with the, with the Principles of Learning and Teaching Pedagogy Exam, yes.
That was the recommendation.
Yeah.
But the con, the content exam is what's left. That's what I was, was questioning.
Yeah.
Just in terms of, because I've been on the board and I've not, uh, really, um, dealt with content. Is, is it designed, is it proving to us what it is we're wanting to be proven?
Yeah, so each test that we have, um, that ETS offers, it has a breakdown of what's covered on it and, um, basically the, those standards that it's achieving to meet. So those panels that are established, they set the cut score, they review it. We've provided individuals from Kansas to sit on that. That then comes to our Professional Standards Board. Uh, ETS comes and speaks with us, and they break out, um, each of those exams and cover them in depth with us. And then the Professional Standards Board make their recommendation to you. And so that's kind of, that's how you usually see it, is based on that recommendation of the Professional Standards Board. So you'll just see that, yes, they support this test and this cut score. And, um, in your board materials, there can be a breakdown of that exam. I, I think we include that in there. But we haven't, like, for each test, do we bring it to you to review? But we haven't done that historically.
And, and I guess, I'm still struggling with, with asking this properly.
Sure.
Um, how often is that exam reviewed to see if it's, that's, that's where I'm trying to go?
Typically 10 years.
Typically 10 years?
Yes.
Is there a reason that it's set out so for 10?
No, it's, the only reason I can think of is because it takes time to make those adjustments and do a study uh, to make sure that, uh, control groups that, that that test is actually covering what they need to do. So just the formality of it all.
Okay.
Yeah, Betty, testing at that, when you're talking about a life, either a student taking an exam or in this case, a teacher taking an exam, the reliability and validity of it has to be well-tested across all kinds of spectrums for bias. And so it takes a long time to develop a test. And so that's why it's probably a cycle of every, usually you see those cycles every seven to 10 years in the testing. Because I know when you talk to Beth about our cycle of student test, you just don't create that in day one because it takes a lot of, of development.
So during that time, we actually are looking at, at, um, I guess, if this test is proving to be reliable, if there are more people having challenges, you're collecting that kind of information to go into fine, fine-tuning or looking for a newer test?
So, so we, we personally, uh, the state of Kansas are not, but as far as we're talking about that reliable piece, uh, there's a 21, 14 to 21-day window, uh, that, that takes for a test to get scored. And ETS goes through and they identify questions that, you know, that, that may show bias or that need to be changed or amended on that particular test. And that's why we always have a delay on test scores. That, that work is happening. And if we ever identified, so for instance, I, you get a large number of calls about a specific exam or I'm getting a large number of, uh, calls about a specific exam people are having difficulty with, we can go and do an in-depth look and review of that and make a determination.
So it doesn't really take 10 years for it to be tweaked? You can do that if, if something proves to be problematic?
Well, we couldn't necessarily tweak the test. We could take a review and determine if we wanted to continue to use that exam or, uh, ask for changes, but just because we ask for it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you. Before I call on Ann, I'm going to ask a follow-up to that. Can you just, really short, who is ETS? Maybe that would help.
Yeah, Educator Testing Services. So they're a nonprofit entity that's our largest test provider, service, a third-party entity that, that provides these tests for us. And there are another test provider company that you'll hear of is Pearson. So those are kind of like the two largest, two leaders of, in the test world.
Thank you. Ann?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kathy and I sit on the professional standards board and I really like both of these recommendations. I know one of the complaints we also get kids coming out of college is the cost of these tests. That PLT's hundred and eighty bucks and if they're already doing a work, huh?
One seventy, sorry.
Anyway.
You're close.
Hundred and seventy-eight, I think it was. But anyway, if they're going to do a work sample anyway and that demonstrates the pedagogy, I'm good with that. And I, I get a lot of complaints about the test and I think if there's an alternative way that really shows with some rigor that they do know the content after two tries, again, that's a lot of money, varies by test, but I think giving them the opportunity to come to the license review committee with their artifacts and all that stuff to demonstrate that they know what they know, then I think both of these are really good options. Thank you.
Jim Porter.
To admit, I've been on both sides of that. I've been the person that called and I've been the person that's been called in the A teacher, somebody that graduated from college can't get a one-year license without passing the test. And that would be the time that the district leadership assessment could be taken. So if that leadership assessment was given, then the administrators in that school district could tell you that this is a person that we want to keep, basically.
Yes.
That's, that's what that's for.
Yes.
And because you've had a year of proven instruction and, and proven observation. One question, do we know the pass rates? I know this is not your department, but whenever we are reviewing programs, I think it would be good for us to know what the pass rates are. I know that there's one that's virtually one hundred percent and others that are not. But I think that would be good to do that. Okay, now, I'm going to get on my, my issue. And that is the content, the, the praxis content in language arts and, and reading does not specifically deal with, adequately deal with competence in the extent and, and structured literacy. That I am correct in.
Well.
It's sorta, sorta, but.
It does, but there's probably better assessments that are out there.
And I do know that both the border regions and this department are looking at alternatives and I would like for us to, you know, I'm talking about both sides of my mouth. I agree with what we're, what we're doing, what the recommendations are here. So I'm kind of saying let's, the emphasis is testing in one place and then I'm saying out of the other side of my mouth, we need to make sure that, that if we are serious about making sure that every student knows how to read, that teachers coming out of these programs are prepared. And so I, I wanted to at least continue having those discussions about what may be an alternative to make sure that, that we can assuredly say to parents that the person that is teaching your child knows how to teach them to read. So that's not a question, that's just.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Horst.
Thank you. Sorry, I guess my finger stuttered here, but anyway. First off, I want to thank you and commend you and the practices or the professional standards commission or board for looking into this far enough to make a change that I think will make a great deal of difference for many students. I've been hearing about this since when I was actually in the legislature, people thought I could make changes that I would direct them to the department. But I think there's a great opportunity to give opportunities to those who have had issues with passing. Generally, it's one content test that they have an issue with. But I wondered, when, when I think about establishing any kind of a test, that they really ought to cover what, what, they should test what you've been taught. And I'm concerned that perhaps they don't ma, always match our standards that we require and that we're perhaps missing some of the, the instruction that would have been expected. So it seems to me that maybe we need to also make sure that our, if we're going to require people to take these tests, that we need to make certain that the things that are being taught are also the things being tested and we're not testing things that are outside that realm. So at least schools should be teaching the things that are on the test. So, and that's been a concern of mine for a while anyway. But hopefully you can make that kind of a determination also. So just, just my comments and thank you very much for, again, for making changes, being willing to look at changes.
Yes, ma'am.
Jim McNeese.
Just a couple of random thoughts. We have a significant challenge to find teachers. So we're going to create new barriers?
New barriers as far as?
To become a teacher.
Well.
No, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you, 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 this is not smoothing the pathway, it's making a hurdle to think we're going to improve teaching. I don't know. You know, I've seen some really smart people on, on history but couldn't teach a lick. You know, the other thing is, is as much as I, I kind of like this, I still am opposed to one test to determine your future or, and, and I realize it can take it multiple times. You know, and I know that this is designed or intended to assure people that we have quality educators in the, in the, in our classrooms. You know, and I'm not so sure it does. I think it might be not necessarily stopping somebody at the gate, but before they even get to the gate, no, I don't want to go through that gate. There's, there's unintended consequences here and I don't want you all to think that everything's going to get better because we did this. Teaching is still beyond just knowledge of the content, especially, you know, I, I had teachers that were great algebra teachers but don't even think about anything above geometry and geometry's a reach. You know, and I've had great teachers who could teach calculus but couldn't teach algebra. They had no understanding of what a kid coming in in ninth grade or eighth grade, you know, had, but they could knock the heck out of that test. You know, I mean, this isn't a panacea, it's not going to, it has unintended consequences. It makes people think that they're safer than they are and, you know, and I think it puts up another barrier, I know I'm going to be an outlier on this, to encouraging folks to get into education teaching, especially in some areas that are, you know, a little tougher than others, you know, like science and math, which we have. And teaching physical science in ninth grade is a lot different than teaching physics in twelfth grade. You know, just, just some thoughts.
Thank you, Shane. Appreciate your work. This has been, you know, I've got the calls and I'm hearing, you know, good opinions, I think, from the rest of the board. I'm concerned about the last line just because I like, I like we, kind of the streamlining of what, what you've done, but I'm wondering if that last line would maybe, you know, we've gone, it's a good process, that holistic scoring. Everybody likes the teacher. We come and we say, nope. That's where we actually approve or disapprove.
Yeah, so.
Well, when you, you know, I, I, I know that, I know that we're, local control. I mean, I, I know that, I know that, but your, your department, Shane, is competent. You, I mean, and they've gone through that, they've gone through four steps. They've had the local review. I, I'm, I'm just not sure, I, I'm not, I'm just uncomfortable with that.
Sure. So as far as that final step, so the licensure review committee is a committee that's established and they report to you. And their procedures for, they don't have the authority to, to approve any change. They can only make recommendations to the board. So it's part of their natural process when they review that whatever their recommendation is, they send it to the board and the board has the option to agree or disagree with their recommendation. So I, it's just a, another structure that's in place. But the good thing is, I, I, you all have received, you know, licensure review committee recommendations and reviewed those in the past. This time last year, we had about twenty-five to thirty applications that we were going to push through. The LRC meets next week, we have one. And that's due to changes in statutes, the teacher compact, things of that nature. It's kind of really impacted and streamlined. So the good thing about this work is some of these other issues have been, you know, taken, taken care of through statutes and regulations. The LRC is going to have more time to, to focus on this particular area. So you're not going to, you shouldn't receive, you know, hundreds of these coming through. This is a small, small, small percentage of, of, of individuals that will be coming through. And I, you know, I think our, our current procedure that we have with the LRC, you know, making those recommendations for you all to make that final approval is, is, is the right way to go. But that's just my thoughts, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think it's worth noting that it has been determined by the courts that teacher licensure is specifically within the purview of the state board. So thanks for your presentation. I don't see any more questions. We will take a break for ten minutes, be back at ten twenty-five. We will take a break for 10 minutes, be back at 10:25.[204.93]
It consists of seventeen indicators where we take their data and we upload that to the federal government in the way of a program evaluation. For each year and last year was two thousand twenty-one because it's always in the rears. But I will share with you that Kansas has met requirements for fourteen years. We just received notice from OSEP with a concern that only seven states had met requirements completely since two thousand seventeen. And we know for a fact that since two thousand nine that we have met requirements. And what I tell people is isn't anything I do, I just take the state's data, data from the field and I upload that. And that's how the report is formed. So all of the accolades need to go to your special education. Services and programs and the gen ed staff and administrators that support students with disabilities because that's where the data comes from. Let's see if I can move this. Wrong way. So the council member demographics, we must have at least fifty-one percent of the members. Being persons with disabilities or having a child with a disability between the ages of birth and twenty-six. So we have specific stakeholder groups that we have to meet, they're called out in the Kansas regulations. And so we fill those, we advertise them, we send them out across the state and then we get candidates. And then we have a membership committee on CAC that reviews all of the applicants. And I will tell you that one of our priorities is to look for those folk that have a student with a disability. Or they are a person with a disability because we feel that's critical that their voice is heard. And that we as a stakeholder group are listening to what folk with disability or having a child with a disability or exceptionality. What they have to share with us and currently all of our members are either a person with a disability. Or have a child with a disability between the ages of birth and twenty-six. We also try to represent your state board regions and currently we have one board region that we need a member and that's region eight. That's yours Betty. So at this point in time, what we do normally is we look for the regions that are not being covered. And then we'll look at, do they meet the majority rule? Do they have fifty-one percent? So we, we don't ever go below that, but we like to look at it as the majority is going to be persons with disabilities. So I just want you to know Betty, we'll be looking for someone for these three open slots from your area. But we do consider that to be critical and important and we also added into the mix a couple of years ago when there was a debate. Over is it where you work or is it where you live? We look at both. So in some cases, a person could live in region seven and work in region eight so they could meet the board region for both. So I just want to make you aware of that, that we did, we did change that. So our new chair is Marvin Miller. So Marvin's on here, are you on here Marvin?
Yes, I am. The video card is not working so you can't see me, but I am here.
So Marvin, do you have anything you'd like to share with the board at this point?
Well, I, I would just like to say it's my privilege to work again with you. I have been on advisory council for a number of years and. Was chair back in two thousand sixteen and have met many of you at our January. Meetings as well, so I'm looking forward to meet some more of you. I just want to let you know. Betty and Arnold and I have talked. I now do work in district eight and live in district ten, so we do have everything covered, so that is a good thing.
See, that's why we needed you on Marvin.
All the monitoring preparation that Bert and his team is going to be doing this year. CAC will be a big stakeholder in that and we'll be listening to people. Around the state as we move forward on this, but I am excited that we are. One of the states that have, have met requirements for fourteen years, so. I look forward to continuing to work with Chair Haas and Dr. Randy Watson and of course Jim McNeese.
Thank you Marvin and you can jump in anytime, just interrupt me because I get on a, a roll and I just keep going. So one of the things that we are addressing currently is learning disability for dyslexia. Just to make you aware, when that legislative action was taken, there was no contact made with my department. No one asked me for information, nobody checked to see how dyslexia was currently included. Under the definition of a child with a learning disability. And suddenly we get a bill that says that we're going to call dyslexia a state special education disability. It's already considered a federal learning disability. In fact, in the definition that's in the dyslexia handbook. It starts with is a learning disability of neurobiological base. So I want you to be aware that what we've done though is we've called out our systems and we've said, you can no longer say to a parent. That we don't diagnose learning disabilities because that's what was happening. Parent would bring a letter that said, I have a diagnosis and the school says we don't deal with dyslexia. So we're ending that and we're going to identification. Because we do identify students with disabilities, we don't diagnose. Diagnosis is a medical. Term, it's a clinical term, it's something that physicians and clinical folk do. But we do education and through education, we identify disabilities. And that's through the, the process of a comprehensive evaluation, a team meeting, including the parent. And determining that the child meets eligibility for special education. But on top of that, they have to demonstrate a need for special education. So you could get a letter saying that a child has a learning disability from a doctor. Diagnosis and through the evaluation process, the child could be scoring in the upper quartile against the grade level. So it's an issue of are we balancing true disability? Are we looking at this child through the lens of disability? And more importantly, that's why it's on here, we need to make sure that our special educators are trained in the. The letters program or in a structured literacy format. We have to make sure that happens because when they come to us, we're supposed to be the experts that are able to. To support these kids specifically in reading math behavior. Those I'm going to just call out those three because that's where we get the most of our children. They either have behaviors, they have reading or math disabilities and they require support services. It's called specially designed instruction for a reason. And we need to be the experts when they come to us. So Jim and I have talked about this and I'm his cheerleader, yes.
Got a quick question from Betty.
Yes Betty.
Yes, I, I do would like, I would like for you to offer clarification on this because I did have a parent that. Said she noticed her child was not. Progressing in reading as they should, but had challenges with trying to get the, the. The school to. Set up meetings and, and go through that process. Is that something that, that's common or is that just unique and, and, and in a situation like that? Who would they reach out to if they don't get the corporation?
Well, first you reach out to the building administrator and you let the administrator know that you have concerns about your child. Now, one of the things that a parent can do is they can ask for a comprehensive evaluation. All a parent has to do is say, I want my child to be evaluated. Now the school has two options. They either do the evaluation through a prior written notice that says this is the areas we'll evaluate in. Or they send a prior written notice that says we are not going to do the evaluation and this is why. And then the parent can file due process against that system. So what I'm trying to say Betty is the parent has the right to ask for an evaluation.
Thank you, and that's good information to have out there.
Yeah, it's very confusing because parents hit a wall and they hit a wall and that's why we have to investigate formal complaints. They normally come from parents, but some will come from school systems. And they're concerned about an administrator or someone who's put a wall up and we have to make sure that wall comes down. Because we're very parent friendly and we have to make sure that we're supporting the parent who is supporting their child. So that's probably one of the reasons why I think it was legislated. Is there were too many stories like that where the parent had concerns and had gone to get support and had therapy and then the school was not. Listening, I'm just going to put it that way. So we can, we, we have ways of making the school listen and one of those is request the evaluation. So I'm also going to be encouraging through letter form, I also encouraged it during the July leadership conference. That we get our special educators to the structured literacy training. Specifically the letters training which now can be provided virtually to the district. Doesn't have to be a cohort that waits till January or next September. The district can ask for training and they will set it up at the district level. And it will be, it's intensive, but it will be the same training, the same protocol, the same programs. But it doesn't require then you to get subs all the time to have them gone for days on end. So I just want to clarify that.
Want to say go back. What, and Jim got to meet Mark and, and the team. We, we have a team that just handles issues. That are pure neutral. They don't, they don't take the side of the school, they don't take the side of the parent. They really look into it, but they try to answer a lot of parent questions. That maybe weren't, weren't handled and then you can appeal decisions. So just know if you get a contact by a special education parent. You can send them to me, we'll get them the assistance they need in understanding their rights. And what they can do and how they can proceed because oftentimes they don't know.
I appreciate that Randy because I will get emails from parents. And rather than trying to respond and then send them on to my legal team, because I do have several legal. Folk lawyers that work for our team that are trained in special education law. Mark Ward has been here for years and Mark is known around the country for his expertise in special education law. And so I will send them to Mark and then Mark will contact them. And then he goes through the deep dive of, okay, what is your concern? What have you tried? And then he always gives them the option that they can file a formal complaint if they would choose to. In which case we assign an objective individual who has legal background. To do an investigation, I review every one of them, we had over eighty of them last year. Considering the number of kids we have with disabilities, as Mark says, that's not very many at all. The state of Connecticut, we have maybe two due process hearings, those are intensive and require lawyers. We have maybe two, they have over two hundred per year in Connecticut. So our parents pretty much go with a formal complaint or they can ask for mediation. Where they ask for somebody to sit down and mediate between them and the school system. And then they sign agreements, but that doesn't preclude that the parent can't go ahead and file for due process. So there's a little dispute resolution training going on here, but just to make you aware that we take every complaint seriously. And they get investigated and they have findings and sometimes the district has corrective action. It's just the reality of what we have to do and what we deal with. So one of the things that we're going to be doing this year is differentiated monitoring. The federal government had not been in Kansas to do a monitor since two thousand and nine. Several states, they did not come in, why? Because we met requirements. So they had a system to support those. States and territories that were not meeting requirements. So they put their resources in going out and doing those sorts of investigations. Well, three years ago, we got a letter that said they now are going to be required to investigate all states. And they put us in cohorts and we got in cohort two. And so what they will do is they'll do a review of our website, they'll meet with our stakeholders. They might even meet with you, I'm not sure who all they'll want to meet with, they're here for a week in September of two thousand twenty-four. And they'll be looking at our website and all of our resources we have listed. And from there then we'll find out if we met requirements through the monitoring or if we have some corrective action areas that we need to meet. But you all need to be aware that CAC will be spending a lot of time on differentiated monitoring this year. So that we're prepared and we feel very good because we have three TA folk, technical assistance folk from the federal level. Who are in TA centers that are supporting us, so they let us know if they see anything that we need to address. And then our state performance, annual performance report will be due in January. We submitted in February, but we try to have everything done by January, so we have day long meetings where we go through the seventeen indicators. We have leads in my agency and my team who are going through and they collect all the data, they do the disaggregation. They bring that data before the entire team, then the team looks at it and then we check it off that it's ready for submission. And we'll do that all the way through January. And CAC is very important because they had to approve all our targets that we set for our data. For both compliance and results because we don't deal with just compliance. The federal government expects results for kids with disabilities, so we're focused on that as well. And then we'll elect a vice chair for CAC at our next meeting. And this is what it's all about. These are children of current and past team members with sets. And we put this up at every one of our powerpoints to let people know how important it is that we keep the focus on the, on the students. Because that's what we're here for. And as long as we do that, we'll be in the right lens of supporting the state. And then here's my contact information and Marvin's contact information.
That is not my current phone number, I think it might have been the previous.
Well, the reason that it's not is because it's Kayla's. And that way if they're calling you, then Kayla will get it, but they'll get your, they can email you, but we didn't want you to be getting all these phone calls that. We could screen for you Marvin.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I wish you could screen my phone calls. Can I ask you a question? I, I wanted to wait until the end. Can you say just a little bit about families together and what role they might play with, to Betty's point about if there are folks with questions?
Thank you, thank you, that was perfect Melanie. So Families Together is an objective organization that provides supports to parents when they run into roadblocks with agencies or with school districts. They can provide advocacy and they can go out to the school district with the parent, especially a parent who feels uncomfortable. Because they're just scared, they don't know what any of this language means that it's an extensive process. So we work with Leslie Gerard and Leah Hawley in particular, and they are wonderful people. We've worked with Leslie for years. She was our first ex officio member on CAC back when I was on CAC in, I hate to date myself. Late nineties, early two thousands when I was still working at the district level. And I made the recommendation that they be allowed to be on CAC and they formed an ex officio membership. Well, we've grown now to seven different ex officio members, but yes, Families Together outstanding. Very good working relationship with K, KSDE.
Appreciate that, thank you. Board members, any other questions? Jim Porter.
Yeah, yeah. Bert, you know, we've done a lot of work on transition. At some point I'd kind of like to have an update on what we're doing. Relation to the recommendations of the, of the transition task force, you know, that you're, you're well aware of that. And I know that you're, you're very supportive of transition services, but sometime. In the relatively near future, I'd like to.
How about the next quarterly report Jim, I bring transition to the table.
That's, that's great, thank you.
Because we have created a Kansas coordinating council. Rather than have another interlo, or another council meeting. We decided that we would pull agency leads together and that they would meet and that we would talk about. Common trainings, common issues we're having and how we could build capacity. We have an agreement with VR. Who's supposed to be providing pre-ettes training as well as VR support now to students. We also are working with the commerce department, we have several that are members. And we're expanding that and we now have the National Technical Assistance Center for Transition. Who is facilitating that group, so we're doing a lot in transition.
Very good, I'm glad, very glad to do that. And by the way Marvin, I think I've got your number someplace.
Yes, you do.
In case, in case somebody needs it.
Ms. Sheldon Rosky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So is there a way to report without, back to us? Without getting into privacy issues as far as behavior and that relating into expulsions and, and that sort of thing?
We have ESI data and we also have discipline data. So we do collect that, we could provide you with aggregate information. And we could provide that to Barbara or Dr. Watson and then that can be sent out to you because we do file a report. Every year on discipline and we would know the number of suspensions, we do have an N of ten. So if the system has less than ten, we don't report it. Because that gets into then you might be able to identify who that child was. But for those systems that had ten or more, we have that data.
So I was thinking too is if you did like child A, you're seeing it like a, maybe a small. It started out like a small behavioral thing, but then by the time they're in middle school. And then they're going into high school. Is, is there a consistency with child A, child B, you know, as far as like it's. Now it's now we're to the point where they're being expelled on, on behavior. When maybe the, maybe the diagnosis was, wasn't addressed back when they were back in elementary school properly. As far as like with sensory and going into gen ed classes when maybe they shouldn't have been in gen ed classes in the first place based off the IEP.
I understand and I think that's the decision the IEP team has to make is what is the least restrictive environment for each child? We would hope that over time that those behaviors would improve as long as there isn't. A trigger of some sort neurologically attached to the behavior. That we know that it's in the brain dysfunction and in that brain dysfunction. Then we would be more and more restrictive in the environment. So I think you have to look at continuum of services, you have to look at the plan when the child enters school and we even begin in preschool looking at behaviors. In the outcomes web system, one of the areas that is addressed is behavior and a rubric is filled out then. But for students with disabilities, they cannot be expelled. They can be expelled, but they have to have services provided beyond the tenth day.
Right.
So it's an issue of you can't totally say, we're not going to have you here for. This amount of time, we have to provide a way to get you the services that you need. And that's where you'll look at, you'll see where people contract for services with. Certain organizations like a psychological, a psychology residential treatment center, psychological. PRTF is what they're called, or you might look at a special purpose school. Wichita has programs, elementary, middle and high school that are all self-contained, that are removed from the main buildings. So I think you have to look at how we deal with the least restrictive environment for those students. And whether it's an acute or a chronic issue, did it just start or has it been there all along and we've had this child in restrictive settings? Because we can restrict students with disabilities based upon need. They don't have to be in a general education environment if they are not prepared to be in that environment.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think.
I'd love to have more discussions on that with, with you on one to one.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
And Jim McNeese.
Bert, I've, I've enjoyed being on CAC. It's been a great opportunity and I would invite. Any of the board members who would like to join me at a CAC meeting, our next meeting is when?
September twenty-eighth.
September twenty-eighth.
It'll be at the Bishop Center here in Topeka.
Yeah.
And it will be hybrid, so if you want to attend virtually, we can connect you virtually.
Yes, and it, it's, it's, it would be good for you to see how it operates and who's there. And, and, and each one of your districts is represented. And I'd encourage you to be in contact with that representative to keep you up to date about what's going on in your area as well as what's happening at CAC. Yeah, so it, it's been a pleasure to be part of CAC and I've enjoyed it. It's been very enlightening, very instructive over the years.
I, I know, we have a lot of data.
Worked with a lot of issues, you know, and quite frankly, I would like to commend our commissioner as well and the department. For their work with CAC and. When, when I first got on the board, there were a lot of issues that came here and Rocky was here all the time and. It was a, they were in a close relationship, you know, and what you're seeing today is a result of a lot of people working very hard. To bring it all together in a positive way moving forward. Bert's been a big part of that. Has had, you know, different organizations and individuals on CAC. So thank you.
Thanks Jim.
I don't see any more questions from the board. I do want to congratulate Marvin Miller once again on your new role as CAC chair. Thank you Marvin for your service there.
Thank you for allowing me to serve.
And thank you Jim for the invitation, I'll take you up on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
See you next time. Next up we have School Audits one oh one, a learning series with Lauren Murdy, welcome.
We don't get to have Laurel because she's generally working out in the field trying to make sure auditing. You know, one of the things that, that you get to see every month, a sample of every month or. Outstanding people. I, I know Ben, as you know, been here about a year and I think when Bert came. Maybe Bert and I maybe were a little bit more familiar because we spent so long in the field. But it's just astounding the people we have here and the dedication they have for kids and to get this right. We were fortunate enough to steal Laurel from another agency a few years ago and, and to come over. But, but and Laurel will go over this, we want every school district to get every dollar, every dime that they deserve. But we have to do so legally and make sure that they're handling that legally and. And so their team is out in the field, they're, they're field based and, and so. She doesn't get to be in front of you very often, but we're happy that you're here Laurel, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the kind introduction and I would say I would prefer to not be. And, and be in the background, that is my preference, but I do appreciate being here. So thank you for having us and I can tell that each and every one of you is on the edge of your seat. Because audit is, is one of your top ten topics, right, to learn about? There, there, you're, thank you for chuckling. We're, we're going to drag you through it anyway, okay? And hopefully it, it, it won't hurt too much. So good morning, again, my name is Laurel Murdy. And here is my contact information in case something isn't clear today or if you decide to have me back to talk about auditing again. Because you decided again it was in your top ten topics, okay? So a little bit about our team. We have a group of fifteen and I'm one of those. There's two of us that are based here in the Topeka office, myself and then our assistant. And I know some of you are very familiar with Peggy Hill, you cannot have her back, okay? We greatly appreciate her help, in fact, she helped make sure that I was on point in what I was going to share with you today because she had spent so much time with you, so thank you Peggy. So everybody else is out in the field and there's thirteen of them and they are scattered throughout the state. We've got a couple in the southwest area, several around the Wichita area. One, because we're lucky enough to have them up in the northwest area. One down the southeast Kansas area and then the rest of them are up here in the northeast Kansas area. They audit where, generally where they work, okay? So we don't see them too often here in the Topeka office. Here's an overall view of what we audit, who, who we audit, when we audit and how many we conduct, that's this next slide here. School districts, of course. We do audit a few child and adult care food programs, that's mostly during the summer. And then to make our audit work efficient, we go ahead and pick up some of the larger special education programs during the summertime. We have a really small group of driving schools at community colleges and a couple private driving schools. Less than ten, they don't take us very long, but we audit those during the late fall. And then school nutrition programs that are also private schools. But most of our time is spent here. Audit these school districts, we start those in late October after they've submitted their data. How many kids are attending, we call it their claim data. And then we start in October and we finish them up. If we're lucky, we're, we're getting them wrapped up in April, okay? So that payments can be, last payments can be made in June. We audit all of them, all two hundred and eighty-six. This is where most of our time and effort is spent, so that's what we're going to talk about today. Despite all these other entities that we audit, this is where we spend most of our time, so that's what I'm going to drag you through today, okay? So in terms of our team, what we view as our obligation and duties are three things. We have an obligation to schools, we have an obligation to students and we have an obligation to the state. Our obligation to the schools is to make sure, as the commissioner said, that they receive all the state aid they are entitled to. Sometimes we say not a penny more. But we find audit, we find state aid that they've left on the table more often than not, so. Honestly, it is our obligation to make sure they receive every dollar that they're entitled to under the state law. In terms of the obligation to students, it's pretty easy sometimes to view audit as completely over here and the students over here. But there are some steps that we take that directly affect whether or not high quality services are provided to students. And I'll give you an example of that today, okay? So that's our obligation to Kansas students is to ensure that they receive high quality services. Third obligation is to the state of Kansas and taxpayers, taxpayers, all of us. That the dollars are spent according to state law. So those are the overall arching duties that we view as a team. In terms of our work, we have what I'm going to call two and a half buckets that I put things in. There's one big bucket called state aid entitlement, right? That's the state aid that goes to the school so that they can pay teachers and bus drivers and custodians. What we're looking for there in terms of audit work is enrollment and attendance data. Were the students there? If they were there according to a certain count date, which you'll hear me talk about in a little bit, then it's times based state aid. Five thousand and eighty-eight going here forward. That's our big bucket of work is were they enrolled and attending according to the state rules? And then our second bucket of work is looking at last year's expenditures, okay? And then our second bucket of work is looking at last year's expenditures, okay? And then I have this last bucket of work, which I call the half bucket, the team wouldn't agree because it's a lot of work, other audit work, and I'll, I'll show you here in a minute. When we look at enrollment data, again, that's what the base state aid is paid out on. We're looking at daily attendance records for students at all districts, okay? Daily attendance records. When we look at expenditures, I would say this one's a little bit simpler. We're looking at last year's expenditures. Again, this is the second bucket and this is all the time that I'm going to spend on that second bucket. When we look at expenditures, last year's, we're looking at things like transportation expenditures, both regular route transportation expenditures and special education expenditures, indirect costs, those are your administrators, parents' teachers' grants, did they spend it according to how they said they were going to spend it? Bond and interest and mentor teacher, that's the one I'll pull out as an example. Mentor teacher, when it's funded, it's a little bit over a million dollars a year and that funding is meant to go to teachers who are mentoring first-year teachers or second or third-year teachers if we're lucky and can spread the funding that thin. What we're looking for in terms of audit, and again, this would be last year's expenditures, is payroll records. Did the school district pay the mentor teacher? And if they didn't, we say probably ought to do that, okay? So that's what I mean by a good example of looking at last year's expenditures for mentor teacher, okay? Our little other half bucket, again, which isn't small, is, is this work, school bus safety audits. I think most prob, most people probably wouldn't know that we do some work in that area at all districts, whether they're contracted for those services or not. We're looking for whether or not those drivers have current driver's licenses on file. There are times where we find that they do not have them, okay? It's not just a matter of not having them on the file, there's, it's, it's, happens very rarely, but there has been an occasion where the person shouldn't have been driving at all. They did not have a valid license. So I feel good about the work that we're doing in this area because it ensures student safety. We're also looking to make sure that they have current physicals on file, okay? And that they have attended safety meetings and that they have done pre-trip inspections on all those vehicles that are hauling kids, okay? School term is also in this little half bucket. We're going to cover that one in detail in just a little bit, but I, again, that's in our other audit bucket work. So, two and a half buckets, enrollment and attendance data, expenditures we've already talked about, and then this is the other little piece. Let's talk about the main one, enrollment and attendance, it's what base state aid is paid on, and I've got some fairly detailed slides here. I'm going to cover them, pull you through them pretty quickly. It's count date, September 20th. If they are regularly enrolled, attending in person, were they there on September 20th or not? They're not funded if they weren't there, except we have a safety net. If they missed the 20th, but they were enrolled on the 20th, did they attend one day before and one day after but before the 4th, then they're counted and funded, okay? Because we don't want to take the funding away if they really should have it, so there's a safety net there. That's for a regularly enrolled student attending in person. We have other rules if they're attending virtually. We look at two days, one day before the 20th, one day after but before the 4th, average them together and that's the time that's funded. If they're 20 years old and they're attending virtually, we look at credits. We don't even look at attendance records. We look at transcripts, something very, very much document-oriented, okay? Preschool at risk, now that three-year-olds are funded, and thank you, I know the field appreciates that, three and four-year-old at risk, here's the criteria for them. They have to be three or four by August 31. We're checking those birth dates and we're also checking to make sure that they meet one of these criteria. Again, all of this is tied to enrollment and base state aid. And then this is the out-of-state students. They're funded, but at half unless mom, dad or guardian works for the district where the student is attending and we're checking for that too, okay? So that's attendance-related enrollment data, looking at daily attendance records. But in, in terms of funding, that was the base state aid. There's funding on top of that, right? The weighted enrollment. I'm not going to drag you through each one of these, I promise. I'm going to pull one of them out as an example, but this is the weighted funding areas. At-risk, which is funded based on how many free lunch students you have. Bilingual, that one we're going to cover in detail. Transportation aid and then career tech ed. Here's bilingual. This is a good example of, remember I said we have a duty to the students to ensure high-quality services? This is a good example of some of the audit steps that we take to ensure high-quality services. In order for bilingual funding to be paid out, they have to have a qualified teacher, they have to have a qualified student. We're going to talk about the teacher. Here are the, the requirements for a licensed teacher who has an ESOL endorsement that could provide services to an English learner. They have to have a license. They have to have an ESOL endorsement attached to that license or one of these other provisions. And we check for that in addition to the contact minutes provided to the student. So they either have a licensed teacher with an ESOL endorsement or they can have a para providing those services as long as the para is supervised by the licensed teacher with the ESOL endorsement, okay? So again, a good example of the audit steps we take to ensure high-quality services for students. I said we would cover auditing the school term, that's in that little, again, half bucket. So, state law requires 186 days or 1,116 hours for students kindergarten through 11th grade. If you're a senior, it's about a week less at 1,086. If you're really little and in preschool, preschool age at risk is 465. Here are the criteria for what they can or can't count towards the school term requirement and we're checking for these, right? And each building keeps a log and we take a look at it. Did they count all their class time? I hope so, because that's the bulk of it. Parent-teacher conferences time counts every hour that they have. And then half the professional development, lunch has never counted, recess does count, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, as long as it's mid-morning. So that's an example of some other audit work. Again, goes towards high-quality service. I've talked a lot about, well, you have to have this, you have to be attending on this day, this counts, that doesn't. That's audit criteria. Our goal here in terms of audit criteria is one thing, no surprises, okay? Our audit team is not out to get anyone. We are not the auditing police. We can truly say we're from the government and we're here to help, okay? And we really mean it. It doesn't mean that it, it doesn't mean that we're always going to have findings that they're, that they're pleased with because there are some instances where we cannot fund something that they have claimed because the documentation simply isn't there or didn't happen. But our goal is no surprises, okay? So to make sure that happens, we tell them. We tell them what the audit criteria is. It's always based in state law or long-term KSDE policies. We always tell them when we're coming, we send them an audit engagement letter, we have a document called preparing for KSDE audit. We see these people each year, year in and year out, so it's not a out and back and once, one day, we're going to be back the next year, so we need to build good, solid relationships with them. And they do rely on us for information about audit criteria. One of the chief ways that we can help them know that is we have a webpage out there that has all the audit guides on it, including a 50-page light reading enrollment handbook in case you want to read it. And then the other way that we can help them understand the audit criteria is counting kids workshops, okay? If you want to come to one of these, here's where I'm going to be, starting last part of August. We'll, we'll start out at Oakley.
We encourage everyone to go to Oakley to see Laurel. Yeah, Kathy, come, then come right by, yeah, yeah.
The downside is you'll have to learn, you'll listen to me for not just 10 or 15 minutes, it's two hours, so. But I start in Oakley and then we'll finish up in Green Bush. And these out, this schedule, I see a bunch of you writing it, this schedule is out on our webpage. If you do need help signing up, please call us and we will help you do that, okay? Our total attendance statewide at these is about 800 school officials and they can range anywhere from a superintendent to a board clerk to a data clerk. At the, at the smaller schools, it tends to be one person wearing 10 hats, so. And if they have new staff, it's really important that they get to one of these, okay? Here's our web address. Again, the audit guides are out there. We do not want to surprise anyone about what we're looking for. It doesn't help them, it doesn't help ensure that they receive the maximum amount of state funding. And then we also have calculators out there that they can use to track their school term and know any time during the school year whether they're on track to meet the school term requirement. I did want to share one picture. This is the audit team. They only come into Topeka about three to four times a year. We've got some veteran staff on there that I think some of our own people don't recognize because they're out in the field. So this is the, the, the workhorse frontline staff. We are missing one because she was sick that day. We pull them in again three to four times a year. It's important that we do that, not only for team building, which is what we were doing here. We had lunch together and we bowled a couple frames, those that could. And then also we have to, we have to keep up to date on auditing criteria because it changes depending, depending on policy and what the legislature does, okay? I am very proud of the team. Each year, as part of counting kids, we hand out customer service surveys and it's a scale one to five with five, of course, being the best. Are we doing our job? Are we helping you? We are most consistently fours and fives and that's because of this team. So that is all I have for today and I'm happy to stand for questions.
Couple of things as you think about the questions you want to ask just in general for Laurel. I, I mentioned this, but integrity is, is at the core of this and, and she exudes that and so does her team. The other thing she didn't tell you, she, she did tell you that, that she was fortunate enough to take Peggy on the team. What she didn't tell you that she reminds me of is I took Michaela off of her team and brought her to me. So, so, so usually, yeah, she, she didn't, she didn't do that publicly, but I'll acknowledge that too, that was, that was good. So hopefully you have some questions for Laurel and hopefully you can attend if, if the time works out for you, one of the counting kids, because she goes in detail, so there's no surprises to school districts.
Excruciating detail maybe for some, for some of you.
Anne?
This may be more policy rather than just auditing, but the thing about the time during the day and the limit on recesses, I think the research is showing that more recess is good. Is there any, is that written in state law, how much they can spend in recess or is that department policy?
It is department policy and it is two of them, up to 15 minutes each and because there is research that shows that if you take a break about mid-morning-
Right.
-take a break about mid-afternoon, that that is helpful. So I do recall that there was one district-
Haysville did that.
Haysville that had tried four and I'm not sure if you received a report back on that. I would love to hear how that had gone too, but it is policy.
The research shows even more than two is, is helpful, particularly like before they take a test, but I just wondered if that's flexible policy or hardcore.
It is policy. Also, is that we, we no longer have any school districts going to school 186 days. They're all using the hour component. So I would also tell you what the research says is generally going to school more days is beneficial, shorter time. Not, not going 10, 11, 12 hours a day because kids wear out. And, and if you just did the ideal, you'd probably go six days a week, right, year round, but you'd go shorter time the younger they are. So there's a lot of what research says that oftentimes doesn't get applied, not so much from Laurel's team, but from school districts, you know, out there, but that is something, Anne, that, that is in our policy.
Anne asked my question. Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How often can a district be, I mean, can they be audited multiple times if they're seeing, you're seeing a pattern? Is it a good thing to come back or just maybe you've covered that?
We see them every year. They get the privilege of seeing one of our staff at least once a year.
But could a district be audited by someone, I mean, are there other private audits that go on throughout the-
So each, each of them have a CPA audit.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, but it does not look at state aid entitlement, which is what we chiefly do is how much funding should they have based on their enrollment? And the CPA audit doesn't cover that, so there isn't any overlap there.
Laurel, could you maybe just, I think that's a great question from Michelle because most of them don't know that every school district would need two audits, one from us and maybe more, you know, especially, could you just, again, give a little bit more detail of what the differences are in those audits and what they could expect at a local board level to receive from those two audits?
So the, each one is required by state law to have a CPA audit done and again, it would cover what their budget was, what their expenditures, no matter what the fund was, how did they spend it? And our staff, we're looking at, again, enrollment and how much state aid should they receive. So it's more of an input into the process versus an output of, in tot, in terms of total expenditures. But yes, required by law, every one of them has to have a CPA audit and then by law, KSDE is supposed to make sure we pay them the correct amount. The only way we can do that is for a team like mine to go and look at enrollment and go, yep, we paid them the right amount, oop, we didn't pay them the right amount, we need some back. So those, they really work in tandem together for them to have two of them, but we'll only see them generally one time a year.
So if, if a district, let's say, had an audit done and it's public information, is, is there something, I mean, maybe they've developed a task force or they're trying to address that, is there something that says out there on their, somewhere to the, to, to the public within that district that they know that that, what the findings were of that and that what the remedies are that they're doing for that? I mean, is it, is it public knowledge? I mean, is there somewhere you can go and find that and, and are they addressing that with that, with that community?
So, the CPA audit piece of it, yes. I believe each of them have to have it on their webpage and published and then, of course, it's gone over in their regular open board meetings. And we have a copy of them, each of them, we take a look at them.
Okay. So as far as, and, and how they're addressing that or what they're doing to address those issues?
That would be, if they had a finding, for example, it would be in the audit report and then their response would also be part of that audit report, which is public.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've got Deana and then I'll call on Deana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When schools such as Gary County that have a dual, two count dates, how do you handle that? Do you go back out to those schools?
It's a good question. It's one of our favorite audits because there's two count dates. Typically, there are only four districts that have that second count date that you're referring to and it is February 20th and it is because they have military-related enrollment. So rather than go see them in the fall or early winter, we push those to the end of the year and those are some of the last ones through the shoot, those four.
Okay, thank you.
Dani Zek?
Thank you. So, when you audit, do then you all go back and present to the board also?
Typically, we're not presenting to a local school board, but we do have an entrance conference and an exit conference with leadership and whoever else they would like to have at our entrance and exit conferences with the district.
And Betty?
Thank you. So this is not, this is a non-penalty audit, more just verifying and correction if necessary?
I, I wouldn't say-
Or is there a penalty?
I wouldn't, well, we don't, I, I can say that, it's safe to say that we don't call it a penalty. I, there are instances, we, we call them exceptions. And it would be instances where, for example, a school district, let's just go around numbers, they said they had 100 students attend on September 20th, but their enrollment and attendance data shows they really only had 95. We would not call that a penalty at all. The district may feel that that is a penalty, but if they only had 95 attending, then we'll go ahead and remove the other five that they claimed and that will reduce their base, their state aid. It will.
So what happens is the other side, Dale Brungard, that team pays based upon what Laurel's team tells them to pay. So, so unlike other audits that, that Michelle, you brought up, which says, here's a finding, what's your correction? We don't ever send the money out. I mean, we send it based upon what Laurel's team is saying. So it's a little bit different process if you think about traditional audits that come in at an auditing firm and that's why school districts have both, if, if you would. One's, as Laurel articulated. So that's our assurance that, that gets paid. Laurel's team, we get this oftentimes too, so let's say, and you'll hear this too, I, I, we could pick 1,000 things. A school district, Atchison, I don't know what I'm thinking about, Atchison says, we're going to contract with a third-party vendor to, to do something, right, to provide something with us. We don't audit the third-party vendor, if that makes sense. We're auditing the school district to see if that money was spent appropriately, but we don't go audit all the other entities that they may subcontract- that they may subcontract with, if that, if that makes sense.
One, one clarification on that. If they contract with, for busing services, of course, the records are often kept by that third-party contractor. And so we would be looking at documentation of safety meetings. And they're the ones that would have record of, are there current driver's licenses? Did they have a current physical? So.
I don't see any more questions this time. Thank you, Laurel.
Yes, thank you.
You're a great presenter.
Thank you.
You made it interesting. I learned a lot. And in fact, I, I had a question. I talked to a teacher a while back, and they said that they were doing, they were mentoring this coming year. And I said, you get paid extra for that? And she said, well, gosh, I don't know. And I always wondered, how do we make sure that they get paid? Now I know.
Make, and make sure they turn them in. Not, I, districts could have a mentor, and they haven't turned them in or claimed the funding. It, there is some documentation involved. In fact, there's, they should be estimating that right now. I think the due ta, due date on the claiming mentor payment for 2324 is September 26th. So if they haven't turned that paperwork in to teacher licensure, they need to get it turned in.
Good to know. Thank you very much. For members, we will take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 11:32. Welcome back. Welcome Shane Carter for our Board Action on the Professional Standards Board nominations.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. So thank you once again. Just a little background on this process. How many of you are hungry and ready for lunch? How many people like alphabet soup? Anybody? Because we're going to go through a lot of acronyms. PSB, PPC, ERC, LRC, and try to make sense of all that. So I, I wanted to give this, not only are we going to do nominations, but I want to take this opportunity to kind of go through some of those different subcommittees and other committees that sometimes get confused. In your packet for board materials, we provided you a breakout, kind of those different subcommittees or other committees that fall underneath your purview. We do have an updated document that I'll send you, send out to you later this week, that includes the, the TVSE Teacher Vacancy Supply Committee, which the Professional Standards Board did vote in June to add that under the Professional Standards Board. So we'll get that out to you. But as far as this actual board nomination process, originally, how we used to conduct this, it was done through the Consent Agenda. The PSB would review it and then make recommendations to you. And it was October or November. It was requested that the, the State Board review these nominations. So it could get, you know, we start breaking down into those vacancies and going through those packets. It could be a somewhat difficult process, but we're going to get through it together. All right. So first thing I wanted to cover is the Professional Standards Board. So there are, there are a few statutes that cover that particular board. So Statute 72-2309, the Teaching and School Administration Professional Standards Advisory Board. It, it basically lays out how, how the board should be composed. And then 722312 lays out those responsibilities of that board. Now, if you did check those statutes, you will also see that the Professional Practices Commission is also listed in there with those particular statutes. So that, that PPC, that actually falls under the purview of General Counsel, but licensure assists General Counsel in getting packets together and tracking whenever members are due when nominations are submitted, to, to fill vacancies on that particular commission as well. If you looked at your document, you will also see that there is a subcommittee called Policies and Procedures Committee, also known as PPC. So two totally different things, and one falls under the Professional Standards Board, the other is its own commission by statute. So as far as our responsibilities for the Professional Standards Board, they recommend for adoption or changes to licensure regulations or any, any standard that governs the, the profession. So when Catherine's up here talking about ERC, or I'm talking about licensure regulations, tests, all that, that work is done behind the scenes, a lot of it through either subcommittees of the Professional Standards Board or the Professional Standards Board itself. As far as the requirements, so the individual has to be licensed in Kansas, actively serving for the last three years, and must have, be a professional educator with five years of experience. So keep that in consideration as we go through this. All right. So we have a couple of different vacancies. One, so this slide, it's probably a little confusing, but the asterisk that you see, that indicates where the actual vacancy is, exists on our board. But don't worry, I've got a graphic that's going to help explain that a little better. But we are going to be looking at an elementary school position, administrator, public school position, and two at-large teacher positions today. So this is a breakout of the Professional Standards Board. The item there is that are highlighted in yellow, that's our, the actual vacancies. Before I move on, any questions? Nope. So in your packet, originally, there were two individuals listed for the Elementary Building Principal position. One of those, Kimberly Resin, she changed her position to a teacher. So she's serving as a special education teacher now. So she's no longer eligible to serve in that capacity. So at this time, we have one nominee that's available for that position. So the board, you have a, you have an option. You can either accept this recommendation, or if you don't want to accept it, we can go back and request additional nominations be submitted. But this would be the sample of the recommendation.
Betty.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education act to appoint Jason Wheeler as a Professional Standards Board Representative, a public elementary school administrator position. And the appointed nominee would fill a three-year term to end June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. Second from Dina. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That is 10-0, motion passes.
Thank you. All right. This is, we're going to get a little more difficult because we have more nominations, so, or more nominees. Just, just to highlight again, we'll be focusing on the, the, the teacher portion requirements. So on the right side, those two areas that are highlighted. And before we move on, I would like to also thank the two individuals that filled that position before. Chrissy Alborni, she served on our executive committee, did an excellent job, wonderful, excellent professional, did a lot of workforce. And Alicia, Alicia Young. Both of them, their support and their service was definitely appreciated, so I want to thank them publicly. So I would also like to thank our communications part, Department, because they told me, you should put this slide in for the board. It'll make it a lot easier. And I'm like, oh, they don't need that. Yeah, you probably do need it. So what you have here is the individual. You should have the packet, their position, the school district they represent, and then the number in parentheses, that is their board district. And I can leave that up if it's needed for discussion.
And again, for the board, Shane, they're choosing two off of this list.
Two, that is correct. And then if, then if you needed a recommended motion, there it is for you as well. Yeah, so I did reach back out to her and see if she was okay with it moving into the teacher. So I put her in the teacher packet.
So we'll take nominations from any board member.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I had several people recommend two folks to me, Karen Wilson and Gabrielle Padilla. And I'm going to place Karen into nomination because I don't think we have any teachers in the group from District Five. And she would satisfy that. And then we don't, also don't have any from Eight. And Gabriel, Gabriel would satisfy that as well. Besides that there, I mean, all these folks are qualified, but these two are particularly qualified. And like I said, three different people recommended them to me. So I would move that the Kansas State Board of Education act to appoint Karen Wilson to serve on the Professional Standards Board. Can I do that?
We'll, we'll take nominations from any board, from all board members, if, if they like.
Oh, you want to do all? Oh, I'm sorry.
Little the list down. Yeah. And then we can go back around.
So she's seeing if there's anyone that wants to put any other name in nomination. And then from there, you can make a motion at the end.
Are there any other nominations from the board?
I'd like to make a nomination for Kimberly. Is it Reason? Yep.
Now, is this for both of them, or just for the first one?
So.
We're doing one?
Because we have two motions.
We'll do two. But we'll vote on each one of them separately, so.
So this is just to fill one position?
And then we'll use the, the same slate to fill the next position.
Then should I go ahead and put Gabrielle, Gabriel in nomination as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have Karen Wilson, Gabrielle Padilla, and Kimberly Reason. Any others? Michelle, did you want to make a comment on Kimberly?
Well, and I was also gonna, if we're doing two, then I'd say Kethar Lehman for the next one. Like she did two, I'm doing two. I'm nominating two.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, so, that's, yeah. Yeah, this, this could be a little difficult as we work through.
I mean, it might be easier just to do one person, and if that person gets six votes, they're in, and if not, you move on to the next nomination.
That was what we were just discussing, to start at the top, start with Karen.
Uh-huh.
And so, make that motion, and then we can vote.
And then Michelle's nominee, you want to do that?
Do you want to make your motion for Karen?
I move, I move the Kansas State Board of Education act to appoint Karen Wilson to serve on the Professional Standards Board, representing a classroom teacher-at-large position. The appointed nominee would serve a three-year term through June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second? Jim McNeese? Any discussion, comments? All in favor, raise your hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? One, two, three. No abstentions, seven, three. Motion passes for Karen. And then.
Take the first one.
Okay. So, we'll go to Kimberly Reason. Sorry, hang on here. All right. Michelle, do you want to make that motion? You've got it on your sheet. Yep, there you go.
No.
It's up on this.
Oh, okay.
It's just all the names. It's up on this. 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 It's up on this.
I just would point out that Kellen Adams is no longer in Chanute. He is the superintendent in Leavenworth. I'm sorry, I should have caught that, Shane. That's not on you. I should have caught that. He is a superintendent. He is practicing, but he changed the location, so he's no longer in District Nine. He would be in District One.
We kicked him out of District.
Okay. Board members, any questions, comments? Dennis.
If we don't elect Kellen, what, do we nominate someone else? Or how does that work?
Yeah. So, if you choose not to, we'll go back and request additional nominees to bring back to you for review and approval.
Okay. So, that would happen later?
Yes.
Like in September?
Yeah, so that position would remain vacant until we brought you a nominee that you would want to elect to fill that position.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I would, oh, hang on, I've got, I just got Dennis. Anne, did you have your hand up, or is that from earlier? Okay. Clear that. Dina, was that you?
I'll make a question.
Okay, Dina.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education act to appoint Kellen Adams to serve on the Licenceur Review Committee, representing the chief school administrative position. The appointed nominee will serve a three-year term through June 30th, 2026.
And Betty, is that a second? Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Six opposed. One, two. Abstain, two. Six, two, two. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one thing I would like to cover before I'm finished. So, this is basically an annual process. In the future, we're looking to have the next set of nominees to you all by February to be set up for the next school year. So, we'll go through this again in February.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
What's that? I don't believe so. Welcome, Mr. Gordon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Watson, and everyone else. And I don't have anything for you to vote on this time. So, the purpose of the agenda item was to give you an update on the, what would occur in USD 112 pending the outcome of that election. And that's a very quick update. It did not pass. I think the voting percentage was 67 to 33 voted to not disorganize the district. So, that's that. There are other options by law by which the territory of a school district may be reassigned to another district or districts. And because there's been a lot of questions about that, I thought I would give you the Reader's Digest version of what that process looks like, as well as some data that I have based on the files in my office. There are two means by which the territory, or the boundaries, if you will, would change from one district to one or more districts. Generally, and to clarify, the law provides for petitions or agreements between one district and one district. So, it's kind of always a one-on-one situation. The two means, first of all, if there is an written agreement between the two school boards, that has to be approved by the State Board of Education. Or, the State Board may issue an order after there is a petition, what I generally refer to as unilateral petition, by one board asking to take territory from another school board or school district. And then we conduct a public hearing. A recommendation is made by a hearing officer that the, eventually the State Board would then vote on. And I'll talk about that more in a second. Regardless of the means by which the territory transfers, there are certain statutory considerations that are set out in law, and these are the minimal list of considerations. This is not an exclusive list of the considerations, generally speaking. What are the city boundaries, and what is the area within three miles surrounding a city whenever there is more than one district in that area? What is the available capacity of the districts, both the giving and the receiving districts to serve the students? What is the condition and the age of the buildings, and if there's a physical plant that may be involved? Many times, territory will involve a school district-owned building. And if the territory within a district transfers, that means the building within that territory would also transfer. What are the overall costs of renovating any of the buildings that may need to be renovated as a result of either, maybe this is a reason why they're asking for the transfer, or maybe this may be a result of a transfer, taken into consideration. What are the costs of busing students? If you redraw the boundary lines, what food services available, and how difficult will that be if the boundaries are redrawn? There, another consideration is what about the school administration and the teachers? Do you have staff to kind of take over a school if you are taking over that area? And what happens to the staff that's already in one particular district if there's a redrawing of the boundaries? And then areas of interest, including the access to the different schools? And what, what would the changes be made to the distances that parents would have to travel to pick up their students? And then students that may be involved in extracurricular activities or sporting events? How will redrawn boundaries affect their ability to participate in basically the extracurricular activities? Another consideration is what about the commercial areas? Are there areas within one particular school district that have more business development that is going to be of interest between one school district versus another school district? There may be times where districts are landlocked with changing demographics. I think this is probably a holdout for other, this matters more for some districts than others, but there may be times where you have to consider the potential in declining enrollment. If you take away a major area of commerce, for example, from one school district, and you give that to the other one, what impact may that have on business and the community that you're taking the boundary away from? And of course, overall, what is the effect of students living in the area? And I put other, because there are other considerations that the State Supreme Court has said that the State Board must take into consideration. Okay? So, those considerations are what the board are, that's what you would look at regardless of how it comes to you, whether it's by transfer agreement or unilateral petition. Transfer by agreement provides that within 90 days of you receiving the agreement, you would issue your order either approving or disapproving the petition. Or, you have the option of amending the request as you deem appropriate. Maybe you receive this petition, and even though both districts say, "Hey, this is, this is what we want to do," you may consider and say, "We still don't believe this is in the best interest of all students of Kansas, so this is how we're going to change it." You can do that. The effective date of doing that would be either the date of the approval of the State Board or the following July 1st. I believe in every circumstance that I've looked at, generally speaking. Now, there's different deadlines, like for taxing purposes and enrollment purposes. Generally speaking, July 1 is the date that the State Board sets for things being available. I will tell you that in the information packet that I provide to anyone that asks, I set kind of a cold deadline of, "I have to have it by February 15th if they want it to be considered and voted on in time for it to go into effect the following July 1." Because it just takes some time to review all of the things to make sure that the petitions include all of the information that is necessary. So, that is transfer by agreement. The other means is transfer by petition or unilateral petition. This is when one district is proposing a transfer of territory from a neighboring district or some other district. First step is they have to, and Madam Chair, I'm happy to stop and answer questions any time if need be, but first, the district that wants the transfer has to seek an agreement. That's step one by statute. If they cannot reach an agreement, then either they give up, which many times they do, or the district seeking the transfer may file a request with the State Board for the appointment of a mediator. The statute essentially says, "The State Board, upon receiving a request for a mediator, shall appoint a qualified mediator." And that's really all it says. It does not go into great detail, other than the State Board will appoint someone that is qualified to do so. The statute also does say that the State Board, or the department, I forget which, will maintain a list of qualified mediators. There's no list. I'm just going to tell you right now, I don't have a list. I don't know why the statute says that, but I just don't have one. I've looked, it's not there. Generally speaking, the past practice, my office identifies and appoints a qualified, experienced mediator, and the petitioning school district is responsible for paying all of those expenses. So, we tell them what mediator it is that they're going to be hiring, and they hire the mediator, and they attempt it. The statute also does make certain requirements. All involved parties must at least attend one mediation. You can't just say, "Yeah, we're not going, we're not mediating this, we're done." Everyone has to at least attend one mediation for that part to say that it failed. And the mediation has one of two results. Either there's a written agreement that the parties all come up with and they'll sign, or there's a written statement from the mediator that says, "We tried, we gave it a good faith effort, and the parties are unable to reach an agreement." Which case, the State Board appoints a hearing officer, which is me. I'll just tell you that I've, my office has been the hearing officer on land transfers forever, so, and I've handled all these cases since I've been here, and my predecessor did as well. The hearing officer sets a actual hearing schedule, and I will tell you, the notice of that hearing has to be published two consecutive weeks in the newspaper of general circulation within the school district from which the territory is to come from. And then the other deadline is the final publication must occur between 10 and three days prior to the date of the hearing. I only point that out because everyone always asks me, "When exactly is the hearing going to be?" That takes math, and that's going to take a minute to figure out. And I, that's just math that we have to work out, and that's, that's how we provide notice. Madam Chair.
I just have a question about the newspaper. Do we, do we know for certain that each USD has a local newspaper at this point?
No, we don't know that.
Okay, thank you.
We do the best that we can.
Well, they, they, they have to, because they have to publish the notice of their budget. It's always, it's been in dispute in the last several years because most areas don't have a daily paper anymore. They may have a weekly or a monthly, and most people do it electronically. But the law still says that they have to do it this manner. So if it's weekly, think about that. Because you, and if you miss one of those weeks, or what happens even more frequently than that, the school district doesn't miss it, the newspaper forgets to publish it, then you start over. Because the law is very specific.
Generally speaking, we would, we would present publication more than just twice. We would try to give out as much notification as we can. That's the minimum requirement that's set out in statute, but we, we try to provide. And obviously, if it comes to this point, we would be publishing on our website. We would encourage all the school districts in the area to publish it. We would try to get out the info as, as best we could. Within 90 days after the conclusion of the public hearing, and again, just like I mentioned before when we talked about the public hearings for, if there was a dissolution of a school district, there's really no timeline set on how long a public hearing may take, and it may take more than one particular setting. It just kind of depends on the circumstance. From what I've seen in the files, the public hearings, most of that work is done ahead of time. Most of the documentation is provided within the petitions and within the response to petition. But you still have that public hearing opportunity anyway. So within 90 days of the conclusion of the public hearing, you shall issue your order. You can either approve or disapprove the transfer petition. Or again, you can approve it, making changes as you deem appropriate. If any petition is denied, whether it be by a petition or by agreement, nothing may be reconsidered for a period of two years. So it's kind of a, if you get it wrong this time, you don't get to come back a year from now. Over the same area of territory. So it can't be a matter of District A tries taking the, the territory, that fails, and then District B gets to try to come in and take the same territory. The statute refers to any of the same territory. So it's not a matter of everyone trying to grab it. I don't know if that'd ever be the circumstance, but that is how I read the, the limitation. So some, some numbers, because people always ask. Well, how often does the state board deny, or how often does the state board hear one of these unilateral petitions? I've been here since 2012. You have not had a unilateral petition since. The most recent one that I could find is from 2007. That was the last time that there was a unilateral petition that was submitted to the state board. There have been a few agreements that you all, many of you currently on the board have voted on. But between 1987 and 2019, 2019 being the last time that there was a, a agreement, in that time, there have been 23 petitions and 24 agreements that the state board has voted on. Of those, the hearing officer recommended agreement 29 times, and the board actually approved agreements 32 times. There have been, or approval, not agreement, pardon me. The recommendation was to approve it. The final vote was to actually approve it 32 times. There have been 14 instances since that, in that timeframe, where the hearing officer recommended denial. And of those 14 times, or I should say, the board voted to deny 11 times. So the board doesn't always necessarily follow the recommendations of the hearing officer, right? What I can share with you, and I think I already said this before, in that time, there have only been eight unilateral petitions that have been approved in a span of 30 years. Every other unilateral petition had been denied. There were three or four, maybe five, that were withdrawn by the petitioners for one reason or another. So statistically, you know, that's not to say what's going to happen the next time you receive a petition, but statistically, that has generally, you know, that, that's what's happened over the past 30 some years. Some other considerations, just that I'll share with you from the land transfer packet. Again, this is about a 30-page document that I share with anybody that asks. It's the change in circumstance that is what the basis should be for any school district petitioning to receive or take territory from another district. There are some material, there are some changes that are material and some that are not. In the past, a consideration of a type of change in circumstances that justifies a transfer of land by petition include a recent school closing, which makes it more practical for students to attend school in the, in a neighboring district. There may be the establishment of a new or more significant attendance center that would make it easier for students to attend, or changes in natural boundaries, such as a lake, or a river, or maybe a highway is either created or is destroyed, that make it easier or more difficult, and that affects the transportation of the students. Examples of changes which do not constitute a material change includes a change in the local Board of Education's transportation policy. That generally is seen as not being material enough to warrant changing the boundaries of a school district. A change in school district property taxes is not considered a material change. And any land transfer request, which is primarily to gain a financial advantage for individuals, such as those that are land developers, and I get this, I get this every six months. Hey, we developed the subdivision, but we didn't pay attention to where the school boundaries were, and the school district boundary happens to go right through the middle of the subdivision, and we want everybody to be in the same school district, so change it. You can ask for, you can petition if you want to, but go yell at your realtor. And I have not seen, again, I've been here for 11 years, and I've not even seen a petition come forward. So though, that would be a circumstance that generally is not accepted as a material change. There's a lot of other legal mumbo jumbo, Madam Chair, that I'm happy to share. But in a nutshell, that is the process that a school district or school districts may go through to request changes in the school district boundaries. I think the last thing that I would say is, the only entities that have standing, that can even file a petition, are the school boards, not individuals or citizens or groups of citizens within the schools. They have, they don't have that capacity. So, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any questions from the board? I see none.
All right, thank you all very much.
Appreciate your presentation. Now, we will move on to the consent agenda. Obviously, I, I'm going to insert, I'm going to kind of insert my, my board report here. Because this trip to even me up today, we, we've had a couple of changes to the way that we lay out the agenda. And so next month, we will vote on the agenda for both days on Tuesday. So Tuesday morning, anything that you want to pull or need more information on? If you have questions, that's a great time to bring it up. If you haven't brought it up beforehand, which is also an excellent time to bring it up. And then we'll make sure that those people are in the room now. So at the end of the day on Wednesday, so that we can get that information from them. So we've pulled, Michelle pulled C, M, and O from the consent agenda. And so I'll just go through those one by one and have, I think, is everyone here? I'm not, I don't have a list of who goes with which item.
Only those that are around McKenney Vento homes. Because I didn't know about the others until.
Okay, so is there someone here that, excuse me?
She doesn't have questions.
She said she could vote. Vote them separately, but I don't think she is.
Could someone just give us a brief overview of item C, McKenney Vento?
This is Maureen. You don't get to see Maureen very often.
No. Hello, Maureen, welcome.
Well, thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
Bend that a little bit. I'm notoriously poor with microphones, so let me know if you can't hear me. So I'm Maureen, I'm the McKenney Vento State Coordinator. I've been in the position since August of 2018. So five years before that, with Department of Health and Environment for 18. So been around for a while.
Wonderful.
What can I do to help?
Could you just give us a quick overview of item C on the consent agenda?
So, right, those were the subgrants. So, I mean, that's a pretty broad topic. Can, can we narrow that down a little bit? What is it? Do we want an overview of the McKenney Vento program? Do we want a definition? What is it?
I think a definition of McKenney Vento would be helpful.
Sure.
And then just a high level, what we're voting on.
Okay. So the definition of McKenney Vento homelessness, the overarching fundamental requirement is that you've lost your housing, and it was due to a hardship, right? So once you get past that kind of big question, the next question is, are you in a regular, fixed, and adequate place to sleep every night? So your nighttime residence. That in a nutshell is McKenney Vento definition. The subgrant funding is really the only annual funding for school districts to assist their McKenney Vento students. They're required to set aside some total one money. We don't, we don't tell them how much they have to set aside. There's a minimum requirement for that. But other than that total one set aside, the subgrants are the only additional funding that come for support of McKenney Vento students.
Okay, that's helpful. Jim McNeese.
And what can they use the funding for?
There are 16 categories for which they can use the funding. If you'd like me to read them, I have them. So basically, all of those categories are going to be to support McKenney Vento kids to get to school and to stay in school. So medical services, transportation, waiving of fees, curricular activities, that kind of thing.
Michelle.
And the only school that they could attend would be a public education school.
To be eligible for McKenney Vento services, you do need to be enrolled in a public educate, yes. Public school district, yep.
Anne.
Thank you for being here. I think the thing that really jumped out to me about this particular item is that we need to make sure that every, if I'm reading this right, the idea is that every homeless child has the right to access to a public education that any other kid does. They're not second-class citizens. You can't just say, well, we're going to send all the homeless kids over here to school because we don't want to take care of them. They have a right to a public education. And the other thing that really jumped out at me about what we're providing here, and I just shout out to my new peeps in Olathe, because they got a, a big, they're up for a big grant, as well as my old district, Topeka, because they deal with a lot of homeless kids. But it's not just where you're going to go to school. It's all those wraparound services that you were talking about. Transportation, you know, medical services, services for the families. So this is not only serving the kids, but it's serving their families as well, who are in poverty. And so anyway, it's just, just amazing. For me, I'm not going to vote against homeless kids, so appreciate you being here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Betty.
And actually, when I pressed the button, I didn't realize Anne was going to cover a majority of that. I see a lot of, of the benefits in Wichita. These are kids that through no fault of their own, they have no place to stay, no transportation. And McKenney Vento steps in to offer support, to get those kids to, to a school. If they need busing from a specific hotel motel, is where they usually end up staying. When they're there and they have no food and they have no, there's lots of things to do to help unfortunate kids. From my perspective, I don't know how anyone could not want to support a kid that is in such desperate need. And I saw this a lot in, in Wichita, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Thank you. Got a couple more, Kathy?
So I guess my question would be, I get the whole school part of that, because obviously that fits with all of this. But when you're talking medical services and things, so we're expecting that to run through the school district?
Yeah, that's where things get a little dicey on the McKenney Vento side, right? Because you kind of need that parent permission to do those kinds of things. But yes, we do have districts that have their own health clinics in district. Hayesville is one of them, and that school clinic is right there. And they can bring kids in and have parents help them get kids. Because oftentimes, transportation to medical services is a big barrier for kids. So, yeah. But also, we're talking things like eyeglasses, you know, to be able to see, or if they need hearing aids, those kinds of fundamental things that would be barriers for them to participate in their classroom activities.
Dennis.
Is there any connection between foster care timeframe? Do you see connections there where these kids get moved into foster care?
I can tell you that from the McKenney Vento side of things, it, yeah, there's, there's some definite overlap. You cannot be a ward of the state and be McKenney Vento eligible. But where we find kids coming into the McKenney Vento realm, from the foster care realm, is around the age of 18, when they age out of foster care. And then it's not unusual for kids to be emancipated, let's go with that word, from their foster care home, and then they're just on their own. And at that point, they become unaccompanied McKenney Vento students.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just aware of some faith-based organizations that, that help with that, like Youth Thrive. And, you know, where they get, get to be 18 years old, they're considered an adult, and then a faith-based organization steps in and helps them. Are you familiar with any, any assistance like that?
Oh, I can definitely tell you that in our larger communities, and definitely even our smaller communities, the faith-based communities, they, they help with our McKenney Vento kids. They are one of the foundations that our, our district liaisons rely on, for sure.
I would, I would just really encourage that to happen, you know, instead of us always doing, feel like we have to take care of, you know, a situation that maybe has a better remedy. That's, that's where I'm coming from, so.
I don't see any more questions. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you.
It sounds like maybe we have some folks to speak to the other two now. So item M is the request to contract with Sprout Communications LLC for the development of state leadership resources. Hello, Natalie.
Thank you. So Sprout created the original Sunflower model, the career field cluster and pathway model that we have now. And we are going to review seven clusters, starting in the fall. And we've invited K-Board to come over to work with pathway to program alignment. So helping to build models that will more clearly provide accurate information to students, families, and educators. We talk a lot about multiple entry and exit points, and different credentials or education that they can learn along the way. So that is the request. It initially had been done by Sprouts. And we anticipate building out more extensive models to tell that picture.
Thank you. Anne.
And working with Natalie on the Advisory Commission on Career and Tech Ed, I know we've been using these graphics for quite a while. And it's just like any other thing, every once in a while, you have to update the graphics to reflect, you know, what's new, what's going on, what's changed. And I think if we get some updated ones, it really will help parents and kids to make better decisions and understand what's available.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I don't see any more questions. And then Shane, item O is act to approve changes to the Kansas Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Pilot Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds. That's a mouthful.
Yes, it is.
Also, year.
Yeah, and, and I was trying to, in that board item, explain the changes that went on. But after the original request was sent for approval and was approved by you all, some of our districts dropped out. So Coffeyville, Great Bend, and there was one other, sorry, I apologize, Elkhart dropped out. And we were trying to utilize, make sure that we had funding for up to 18 individuals to participate in this program. We wanted to try to maximize that. So the addition was, we added Lyons into the districts to, to participate, and also added some additional, or an additional spot to Salina to fill now. Since the apprenticeship has already started, there's not, there's not any more changes that'll happen. Salina wasn't able to fill that other position. And so we're, we're still stuck with about 14 people that are in the program now.
Okay, so that was just an effort to refill those empty slots.
It was, yes.
Okay, all right. Board members, any questions on, Anne?
Only that if we would vote this down, then we'd have holes, and we'd have spots unfilled that we could fill?
Well, if, if, if it's voted down, there would be no money to support any of the districts that are in there right now. So I wouldn't be able to pay anybody else for, for, or award grants to those districts that are participating.
Thank you for that. This is critical. I mean, well, we know how many, how much we need teachers, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming down and, and being here to answer those questions. Oh, Kathy. Sorry, Shane.
Did we know why they backed out, the ones that did?
Yeah, difficulties with their apprentices. They thought they had apprentices that were willing to participate in the program. But as we started going into it, some, some apprentices dropped out. So you get a little cold feet. It's, it's not going to be, it's a demanding program. So I think there was some hesitation from our apprentices, or identified potential apprentices.
Anyone else? So the next step will be to vote on the consent agenda, and then we'll vote on C and O separately. Yep. So if there are no more questions, may I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda? Betty?
Move to approve the consent agenda minus C, M, and O.
All in favor? On, on the consent agenda, minus C, M, and O. Yep. All right, that is 10-0. Motion passes for the, Anne and Betty. Yep. And then we'll vote on C, which was the first presentation, McKenney Vento. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have a motion in a second. Thank you, Barbara. To approve item C? All right, is there a second? Jim? Jim and Jim? Barbara, you good? Okay. Voting on item C. All in favor?
I'd just like to note, as a comment before we vote, that while there may be a lot of other organizations that are willing to help these kids, our public schools have an obligation to be there. So that's why I'll be voting yes.
I'd go one step further and say, there will be kids hurt by this, if we don't fund it. And these are kids that have no help.
I'll slow down a minute here. Any other comments? Okay, are we ready to vote on item C? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Three? Barbara, you good? Abstain? One. So that's Michelle, Dennis, Danny, and then abstention from Kathy. So 6-4, most, or 6-3-0, sorry, 6-3-1, motion passes. Next up is item M, the career clusters model. I need, I need a motion.
I move to approve item N.
Thank you, Anne. Is there a second? Betty? You both at the same time. Any discussion? Okay, voting. Okay, voting on item M. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Opposed? Two. Eight, two. Motion passes. Then item O. Changes to the Teacher Apprentice Pilot Governors Emergency Education Relief Funds gear. Any discussion? Or sorry, motion. Kind of get used to this, the changes are.
I move that we approve, uh, approve item O.
Thank you Betty. And Anne? Discussion? Comments? All ready to vote? In favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Opposed? One, two. Eight, two. That's Michelle and Danny. Motion passes. Thank you. We will move on to item twelve, which is not part of the consent agenda. Uh, Chair's report. So you heard my remarks. Um, I will clean this up for next month and we will get better at consent agenda. But thank you all for your patience. I think it's really important that we take the time to understand what we're voting on. If there are questions, it is my job as the Chair to help make sure that you get answers. So please reach out ahead of time. Once you've seen the agenda, we'll get you the clarification that you need. And then if we, you know, still have items that are pollable, make sure that there are people in the room so that we can have these discussions. So it may take us a little bit longer. Um, we're, we're already running about twenty-five minutes behind where we expected to be according to the schedule, which isn't bad according to the agenda. So we'll, we'll clean this up a little bit next month. I thank you all for your patience with me today. Item B, we will act on board travel, which you should have in your packet. Are there any changes to travel? Betty?
I, I will be attending Derby School Board Meeting on, uh, Monday. I've been asked to give an update, um, at the board meeting.
Anyone else? Other changes to travel? Dennis?
I, I just had a date change on visiting Salina. I intended to go to their all-staff meeting Monday, but I have an appointment on the fifteenth, so.
So take that off?
Well, yeah. The date to next Tuesday, the fifteenth.
Ah, okay. Anyone else? Jim Porter?
I move to approve travel.
Thank you. Is there a second? Jim McNeese? All in favor? That is ten O. Motion passes? Thank you. Committee reports. Does anyone have a report to share? Betty?
The Policy Committee has, um, really been working on some different items. And, um, it's been really good. Um, my thanks to Dina who keeps us, uh, in line with providing the why, the history. And my thanks to Kathy because from a new board member perspective, um, she does make the committee aware of things that we need to do to, um, uh, update policy. One of the things that we will be looking at or continuing to look at next month we're meeting is, uh, looking at the evaluation. And over a period of time, we have heard comments and concerns that we need to do some different things. So what I would ask the board to do prior to our meeting next month, if there is a question in or concern that, that you would like for us to take into consideration, to please let us know before, um, the board meeting, uh, next month. Because we'll be, uh, looking at ways that we can update it, um, the evaluations that we do. The second thing that we are doing is trying to prepare, um, um, and I struggle with how to identify this. It's not really a handbook, but many of the rules and guidelines that we struggle or have questions with can be found in policy. But according to Jim Porter, nobody really sits down and read that entire policy manual. So, so what we're trying to do is just highlight and give you directions and, uh, perhaps direct you to where you can find that in policy. If you have additional questions. There was, uh, other than, and Kathy, Dina helped me on this. We're looking at, um, the boards, uh, uh, information for new board members evaluation. I think there was another category where we not.
Just the travel budget.
Uh, and yeah. And, and actually that came under, uh, trying to combine or generalize information on, on travel so that we can best understand, um, why it's important, where the budget comes from and why it is important, uh, for us to try and align our activities in our district to stay within the budget. So we had an opportunity to meet and visit on that. But right now, if, if there's just an area for evaluations, that's what's coming up. If you'd let us know before next month. Thank you.
Thank you Betty. Any other committee reports? We'll, we'll do requests for future agenda? Okay. Dennis, did you?
Just some, just some good things happening with Ag in the classroom. You know, we had the award yesterday and there was some really good information. Neat things that are happening where they're learning horticulture, dehydration, just nutrition. That was really, um, some good things that are happening. And, uh, the, the, the committee up at K-State, they do a good job of, of promoting it. And, uh, they want teachers to, uh, know what they can do in the classroom. And they've, uh, got a packet they can give to teachers. They're also having an Ag Day at K-State on a football day, I think, uh, setting up a display there. And then, uh, Saturday, the tenth of September, they'll be at the State Fair. So it's just a lot of good exposure.
Thank you Dennis. And a reminder, board members, you can also submit individual written reports to the Board Secretary and those will be included in the packet. Anyone else for committee reports? Okay, in that case, I will turn it over to Mark for the Board Attorney Report.
My report today will be a little bit more interactive, uh, so you'll have to not tune me out, Mr. Porter. Um, I just give you a heads up, what I'm going to do is, uh, I've written a, uh, a regulation that I want to read to you. And then I'm going to ask you some questions and ask you to maybe vote on it. No abstentions, of course. Humor. So the questions will be after I read you the regulation. Does the State Board have the legal authority to approve and issue the regulation that I've written? The second question will be within, is the regulation that I've written within the province or the scope of the responsibilities, as you see it, of the State Board? And the third question will be, does the regulation interfere with local control? So a couple of the themes that we normally wrestle with or deal with or share views about. So here's the regulation that I wrote for your consideration. "The Board of Education of each unified school district shall adopt policies or rules that govern the conduct of the employees and students of the school district and that include procedures for enforcement of the policies or rules." Part B. "Before adopting the policies or rules, each Board of Education shall submit the policies or rules to legal counsel for review." Part C. "After the adoption of the policies or rules, the clerk of the Board of Education shall maintain the policies or rules in the permanent files of the school district." That, for sake of our interactive discussion, please assume that you have just adopted that regulation as the State Board of Education. And I'll reread part A because that's the operative provision. The Board, you're, you're issuing a regulation by the State Board that says, "The Board of Education of each unified school district shall adopt policies or rules that govern the conduct of the employees and students of the school district and that include, and, and that include procedures for enforcement of the policies or rules." So I guess, so back to that quest, uh, the, the first question that I'm going to take a poll on is, "Does the State Board have the legal authority to approve and issue this particular regulation?"
I, I actually had a question if I could on that.
Yep. Um, it's interactive, so I'm happy to.
Okay. Because as you are specifying things, one of, one thing that jumps out to me is, uh, once that is, if that's adopted, making it available or how readily available is it? Printed in a handbook? Something where everyone is aware of that, that policy? Because just keeping it with the board clerk, uh, might, that's a concern. I just would, would like.
Good question. A, a regulation and we've, and we've, uh, over periods of years, we talk, we have various process in the, in the rulemaking procedure where it goes to the, uh, to you. You have public comment, it goes to the Attorney General. And then it becomes a regulation that is published in the Kansas Administrative Regulation Book.
Okay.
And is, is law, is law of the board.
Okay.
The reference to maintaining the policies or rules, uh, in the permanent files of the school district, that's after the, after the, the school district adopts those rules and regulations and then they keep them in their own, um, in their own permanent files. So for purposes of this discussion, this is an administrative regulation that has followed through the rulemaking process. And you, you've issued it and you've endorsed it and it went through all the pre, preview process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just for purposes of discussion, um, I'd have to pull the Constitution up, but I know we have authority over operations, but we delegate things to local districts. So I, I guess strictly from a legal standpoint, we could. Would I? No, because I think every district can decide for themselves what their local operating at that level. Operations could be.
So the legal concept that you're implicating here is that the courts have interpreted the rule, the, the level of supervision of the State Board of Education. The challenge is that, uh, as the language of the court, it's something less than to, or excuse me, something more than to advise and something less than to control. So.
Right.
The dilemma you're saying is where does that fall in that continuum?
Yeah.
Between, in, in the definition of the authority of the State Board to supervise education in the state of Kansas. So your point is that this particular statement, "The Board of Education of each unified school district shall adopt policies or rules that govern the conduct of the employees and students of the school district." That's essentially the nugget of what.
I mean, we've done similar things. Like we've said, you have to have a policy on bullying. We've said you have to have a policy on some other thing.
But in your opinion, uh, Board Member Ma, that that statement would not fall within the level of supervision of, of the, that is, my question was, does the State Board have the legal authority? And your, you, your answer is you do have the authority, but you would choose not to exercise it for that particular regulation?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone have a different opinion or different?
Kathy's got her head in.
I would first ask why, why that's even coming up. And second, it, and to my knowledge, every school district has an employee handbook, a student handbook that does all of that. So again, I guess I'm back to my why. Why, why would we be discussing that today?
Oh, it's, it's just an exercise, right?
It's, it's, uh, it is an exercise. Your, I guess your question as to why would be precursor to the regulation that was issued. I, I don't know why you as one board member or why six members would have voted to, but that's, that's the way I'm crafting the, the regulation. So I guess to answer your question is, I think the, the rationale behind the regulation I wrote is that I want to make sure that, that school districts have policies or rules that govern the conduct of the employees and the students. And that they're, that they are, um, issuing those, those rules, regulations up for the district and that they're publishing those and making those known. So I, I'm not sure I, it is a little, my answer is, I guess intentionally vague. But other questions or anyone else have a different view?
You're, you're obviously trying to get us to think about some different things, think, think differently. Dina?
Did you say that it had already been through the process?
Yeah, it, it, the, the language has already been approved by the Attorney General, by the Rules Committee, by counsel, and so the language is already there.
Through.
It's been issued.
With the legal eyes. So they would, it would seem to me that if it was not legal, there would have been, or there was a question about it. There would have been someone along that process who would have questioned your, the ability of the, of the State Board to issue such a regulation. But I agree with Anne. Why you would even say as a State Board that you wanted to have that kind of oversight to that point? So I'm.
I'm sorry. Anne's, Anne's looking puzzled.
Disagreeing.
So the, there, so the, in the legal process, your point is that somebody would have maybe thrown up a caution flag before the regulation got issued or said this isn't advisable. Or in Anne's point, we just simply don't want to go forward with that because it doesn't make good policy. But in terms of interpreting whether it's le, you have legal authority, that's only subject to interpretation by the court after the fact. So you have, you know, you have the speed bumps along the way. But let's say all ten of you agree that this is in the best interest of education policy in the state. And somebody else might disagree and might, uh, bring a legal challenge. And then there would, the court would say, is that within your authority? Is it within the State Board's legal authority to issue that kind of regulation? Danny, you had a question or you, you wanted a comment?
Kathy asked, I mean, why do we even need to do the regulation?
Why do you need to do regulations?
No, that regulation.
That regulation.
I don't, I don't get it.
I, I think they might be confused you're actually proposing this, but this is just an exercise in what if, right? Like what do we think our legal authority?
This is just to get interactive thought and discussion.
It's not on the table.
On a specific regulation that triggers the discussion on, on a abstract regulation, not on something where you, you all may have a, have to vote on.
So I'll offer a different opinion from Anne's. I'm, I'm with.
To me, there's too much gray area. I mean, it's, it, to me, it's very gray. Sorry. I'm sorry. It's just very gray.
But to, 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 not, not to dispute your position, but when you talk about what your legal authority is, it is, it's a, it's a long continuum. That's why I say it depends, I always give the advice, it really depends on the specific regulation involved because it has to fall somewhere above giving advice to local school districts. And it has to be something less than control. So you're in between there and, and you, your view of the vagueness or the, or that, it might fall closer to one or the other. But, but, but all we know is that the court has said, Supreme Court has said, those are the guardrails that you're within. Okay? So you're, you were going to offer another view?
Well, I, I'm with Anne, but Anne said that, that you said that you would not then impose that upon the local district.
Well, the question is, I mean, we do regulations all the time. So it's kind of good to explore how far can we legally go with regulations? And this is a great example because man, it's in that gray area. Do we actually, would we actually have the legal authority to do that? But now that Mark's laid out the borders, I'm not too sure we would have legal authority because it really gets into controlling actions locally. So now I'm, I'm going to have to go back and renew my law degree.
In the last day and a half, I've heard some views about, well, I think that's local, you know, that's really in the bailiwick or, you know, within the bundle of, of obligations and rights of the, of the local school district versus, you know, what do we get to dictate or mandate? But it, it's not really that. It's more supervision, so it's less than control. So I'll, I'll try to move it along, but it's.
I would just submit that we're not necess, in your example, we're not necessarily telling districts what they need to do. We're just describing a framework in which they should do it.
It says you shall, so it's required. It says you shall, so it's requiring. It says this unified, each unified school district, so you're saying each school district within your level of supervision shall, or must, it doesn't say may, it says shall adopt policies or rules that govern the conduct of the employees and students. So you can't be, pardon, the Wild, Wild West. You can't just be, you have to have rules and regulations, so, yes.
I do, I, I would like, because what's been in my mind as an example, when we are voting on whether to suspend somebody's license, okay? That comes before us. One of the things that I wonder is, was there a policy that indicated this was a violation? And if indeed it was a violation, does it specifically state what the consequences are? So if we don't, if there's nothing there and the person says, I wasn't aware there was a policy, and the consequence, you're saying you are poised to take away my license. That's a consequence that person should be aware of, that it is connected with a certain action. So when we say that that's out of our area, not really, because ultimately, that decision is going to come to the State Board to act. If those guardrails have not been put in place, then when you talk about a gray area, that's where it starts to get gray. That's just my opinion.
Did you want to? Okay. So we're going to go back to three questions and, and wrap up the discussion, but question one, does the State Board have the legal authority to approve and issue this regulation? I've heard mixed signals, but I would say maybe mostly yes. You may not want to exercise that legal authority, but you'd say most, maybe there's consensus that you do have the legal authority. The second question is, within the purview or scope of the responsibilities of the State Board, maybe more split because you're advocating strongly that it is because you want policies and procedures at the local level, because then you can, you could have a benchmark to judge activity. I still see some eyes looking like maybe, no, I don't think that's, I think that's too vague. And then the third question is, does the regulation interfere with local control? Yes.
Can I just add this, that would this infringe on federal, like sexual harassment laws that are already in place?
You know, I guess that's all you have to work with. That's, that's the extent of the regulation. If you want to, if you want to amend it later, the next board meeting and make it more specific, you can, but right now, that's what you have to work with. All right. So I don't wear out my welcome. I fibbed a little bit and I didn't make up this regulation. This regulation exists. In fact, this is the article 15 in School Conduct Rules under Kansas State Department of Education, Kansas Administrative Reg. 91-15-1. And while there may have not been as the kind of clarity with the consideration of those three questions, I'll submit to you that the Supreme Court in 1973 gave us good direction on this, on the challenge to this specific regulation. So this is the scenario, and I will send you the email once we wrap up so you have it to look at and digest, but it is that specific regulation that USD 398 Marion County Peabody brought a petition for declaratory judgment saying, "You, State Board, do not have the authority to issue this kind of regulation." And as, and it still stands today. And so this is what led to the 1973 Supreme Court decision of what's commonly referred to as Peabody. In the Peabody case, the Supreme Court reviewed and analyzed the statute that gives the, the State Board's authority. And when we talk about what are the, what are the specific things in the bullseye or very close to 72-7513 says, "In general, but not by way of limitation, consonant with other applicable statutory provisions, the State Board of Education shall adopt and maintain standards, criteria, guidelines, or rules and regulations for the following: school libraries and textbooks and other educational materials, courses of study and curriculum, accredit schools, including elementary, secondary, and junior colleges, public and non-public, certification of administrators, teachers, counselors, and supervisors of school districts, and have the catchall, have general supervision of school nurses." And this, this case, the Kansas Supreme Court not only looked at that regulation that, that was called into question, but also looked at KSA 7513 and came up with the outcome that said, you know, that, that the court said that we believe supervision means something more than to advise, but something less than to control. And here's why it's fuzzy, because they tell us it's fuzzy where, where those lines are drawn. It says, "While the line of demarcation lies somewhere between advice and control, we cannot draw the line with fine precision at this point. We merely conclude that the regulation, which is the bone of contention between the state and district boards, in this case, falls within the supervisory, supervisory power of the State Board of Education." So the regulation I, I read to you is not a fiction, it is in the law, and I think it, it's, in my opinion, while the regulation may be vague, the court's opinion was not, and I'll share that with you to read at your leisure. Thank you.
So Mark gave you a really good legal exercise. The history part of me, I just want to remind you, State Board was not in existence prior to the unification of school districts in the mid 1960s, which then out of, out of that, in the late 60s, established a State Board. And so the late 60s, early 70s, mid 70s, late 70s, there were all these challenges to the newly formed, constitutionally formed State Board. And they came from school districts, it came from KNEA, it came from individuals, and thus the broader powers are, you know, what came out of that. So appreciate that. You go back before that, there was just state superintendent of schools and, and 10,000 little one-room schoolhouse school districts. And so the state of Kansas decided, we need a different governance policy. I think what's even interesting about that discussion, which we oftentimes do, is that through that and through the court challenges, the court very clearly defined what your role is. I think sometimes, as you look this way across the street, there's not a, oftentimes, every year, a recognition, a recognition of that authority. And I know that you, you work hard and your liaisons work hard to recognize that.
Thank you for the history lesson and thank you, Mark, for the exercise. Sometimes we need that. Keep us in shape. All right. For the last bit of today's agenda, does anyone have a future agenda item request? Kathy?
It's not really an item request, it's a request on the, how we're doing the consent agenda, so how we've got it set up. Can we go back to at least having a cover page that lists every, because it's just really hard to, I mean, there's no list anywhere anymore.
The list is on page three this month of the items in the consent agenda, is that?
So, just so I understand, Kathy, so, so you like the separate, do you like the separate packet?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You want in the, just the overall agenda to still list those items so it's easily referable back to the topic? Yeah. That's, that, is that what you're asking?
Okay. I didn't know hers was different. Yeah. Because before that, it was consent and it was A through whatever, but now.
Yep. We can do that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kathy. And yeah, I didn't realize I was seeing something different than what you got this month. Michelle?
And then I think next month, we're talking about screen time and different things on technology, more specific.
That is my understanding is that.
More specifically, screen time maybe might be addressed next month.
Can we look forward to that next month, Randy, screen time?
Yes, that is, that is next month. It'll be technology in general around recommendations around screen time, what, what is appropriate, not appropriate. We're at this early stage, Michelle. We're looking to KU Med Center and pediatricians to come talk to you. Now, we haven't lined those up, but that's in general. I've asked Dr. Jake Steele, who many of you haven't met yet, to kind of give you an overview also of what other states have done relative to that. We'll also hear what the Surgeon General report is on that. So that's kind of, giving you kind of, we haven't tightened all those details down, Michelle, but that is for next month.
And then we did go over KSD, KSD is like they talked yesterday on data, on the data. But there's more, there's more on, on far as a local level, as far as what the one-to-ones, almost every district's moving towards that direction. Are we going to discuss anything like that?
We can. That, that, we can, if you'd like. I mean, as an agenda item, next month is more around screen time. I think we were just talking about trying to chunk it, like what, what data comes to us? Is it secure? Is it not secure? What do we give to the federal government? Next month was around kind of screen time, what's appropriate use? If you'd like to talk about what local data has? I mean, I think we get too broad.
Well, I think like, as far as that, like you talked about, do we collect, who collects that as far as the, like Google, she mentioned Google yesterday. I mean, as far as, as far as user, user technology and, and it being not my own at home that I have and I'm, my kids doing that, as far as like, it's all, it's all in, into the system as far as the.
Yeah. So if a Lathus Schools has a student on an iPad or a computer.
Correct.
And is using any third-party software.
Right.
Who owns that data and where does that go? I think, if you'd like to do that, I think we'd like to do as a separate item versus screen time so that you can kind of segment those, but I think we could do that in October.
Okay.
I mean, if that sounds, if that's what your request is.
Yeah. That'd be great.
It sounds like next month is going to be more on the health aspects and certainly some of the questions next month may lead to what a future presentation could look like, too.
Yes, that is correct.
Any other requests for future agenda items? And if you have submitted one before, I know we kind of have a running list, it's just what fits in where I don't see anymore? Okay. Thank you, board members, for a great meeting. We are adjourned until next month.